City Council meeting. If everyone could just take a moment and silence their cellphones.
Awesome.
And please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our throne.
We are having our city council meeting tonight. Normally we would not be meeting until next week, but several of us are traveling to Fort Collins for the inner-city visit to Fort Collins next week. So, thank you for indulging our change in schedule. Before we begin, this is an important day to note for the city of Asheville today. The North Carolina Supreme Court heard Asheville's water case. They actually heard it in Burke County at the historic courthouse in Morganton, which is so historic that the chairs are extremely tiny and the stairs are super steep. But it was an incredible experience and our city attorney, Robin Kern, is to be commended. She put together an incredible team, which includes Bob Orr, a former Supreme Court Justice, and Matt Sawcheck, who is an attorney out of Raleigh. And Robin worked with them as well and was at the table. And their team did a fantastic job today. As an attorney myself, I think that Matt's handling of the oral argument was the best I've ever seen an attorney handle an appellate oral argument in my experience. So, it was fantastic. And several of us were down there to watch, and I know they all agree, those who saw it. And actually, everybody could see it. If you had an hour, you could have livestreamed it this morning. I'm sure you all did that. But we will not know the opinion from the North Carolina Supreme Court until probably at the earliest in August sometime. So, just wanted to note that. Now, we have our exciting annual event. We have all of our KLA students here tonight. And let me say a little bit about KLA before you all come up. I know you're not all here to talk about accessory dwelling units. You look like you're more into the KLA.
They want to go to bed.
And maybe you also would like to get to bed before midnight tonight. So, we will take care of you first, KLA students. Let me just talk a little bit about the KLA program. Nine years ago, the former mayor, Terry Bellamy, and the Asheville City Council had a vision for a new program that would place students with meaningful summer internships with city departments and partnering organizations throughout Asheville. This program was designed to empower its students to get involved in their communities and to support them on their quest for college and to reward them with a generous scholarship. After a rigorous application process, 25 KLA students are placed in prestigious summer internships that allow them to explore careers and learn about caring from adult professionals. Members of the KLA class of 2016 interned with valuable community partners, including the Asheville Area Chamber of Commerce. Raise your hand, who did that one? There we go. Moog Music, who did that one? All right. Care Partners. All right. The Red Cross of Western North Carolina. Those are just a few. Each Friday during the summer, the students attended day-long leadership workshops that focused on career exploration. Students not only learned about their own skills and interests, they also met community professionals from the six primary career clusters and took a variety of field trips to see careers in action. Of the graduating seniors, all have been accepted to four-year colleges. Congratulations.
Wow.
And many have earned significant merit scholarships, including the Dell Scholarship, Community Foundation of WNC awards, and the local Civitan and Rotary scholarships. This year, the total merit scholarship money earned by KLA students since 2008 will surpass $1.1 million. Beginning last June, the KLA students began planning in-depth social justice projects. They organized the MLK Youth Summit, which brought together more than 50 teenagers from all of Buncombe County's high schools to discuss issues of importance to youth. This semester, the students taught a class each week for Asheville City Schools Foundation IRL after-school program at Asheville Middle School. Over the years, KLA students have given more than 3,400 volunteer hours to our community. In recognition of their accomplishments and the critical role they will play in Asheville's future, the city of Asheville awards each KLA student a scholarship in the amount of $2,000. We are proud of the leadership that the KLA students exhibit each day and look forward to hearing of their achievements in the years to come. Now, all of this wouldn't be possible if it weren't for the amazing Erica Germer. Where is Erica? So, Erica, if you could come forward, and then students and families, if you have anyone else here, please come forward, and we will recognize each of you.
Should I call them and then they come up one at a time?
However you want to do it.
Are they going to shake your hand?
They're going to shake mine. Whether they want to or not.
Does this work? Turn it on. Oh, it's working. Awesome. Here we go. All right. Welcome, family and students. I'm so pleased to see you all here tonight. So, our first one, we're going by alphabetical order and grade level, so it is Secret Allen. Come on up here, Secret. Next, we have Dana Campbell Jr., otherwise known as Dank. Dana. D'Angelo Elliott. Dana. Next is Fatima Gonzalez. Nadia May. All right. Those were our, at the time, well, now they are sophomores, so these are now rising juniors. So, next, we have Candida Alasortega. Mercy, a second. From the way back. Next is Karina Derry. So, those are our juniors. And now, we start the seniors. Here we go. Hakeem Kanaje Allen. Ella Heldrich Schmidt. And last but not least, Satorius Arimbak. I actually have a lot of order, and we cannot forget Kimberly Vargas. Come on up. Sorry, Kimberly. Thank you so much.
Do you want to ask them about how it was? That was a surety shot.
I think they'd like it.
Okay.
So, I'm wondering, we're wondering, if the seniors wouldn't mind sharing their college plans. And I think you can probably project from the audience rather than creating.
Or no, we could, so that people watching from home.
Oh, okay. So, seniors, come on up for a second, real quick. And then, this mic, I think, works. Or I can pass it to my person.
And if you want to say, "City Council, I think maybe..."
Yeah, I guess. See, if you'll place, I'll cover the camera and catch him.
Stand right up.
I'm Hakeem Allen, and I'm going to Western Carolina.
I'm Jaylen Hooker, and I'm going to North Carolina A&amp;T University.
I'm Satorius Arimbak, and I'm going to St. Augustine University.
My name is Requan Griffin, and I'm going to Morehouse College.
I'm Saditra Trenchant, and I'm going to North Carolina A&amp;T.
My name's Caroline Pelena. I'm going to Appalachian State University.
My name is Kimberly Vargas, and I'm going to Appalachian State University.
My name is Taquan Griffin, and I'm going to Morehouse College.
My name is Ella Heldrich Schmidt, and I'm going to Warren Wilson.
My name is Cindy Marquez. I'm going to University of North Carolina at Greensboro.
My name is Jaylen Lynn, and I'm going to Myers Hill University.
My name is Rudy Perez, and I'm going to UNC G, UNC Greensboro.
And real quickly, I'm sorry, I'm kind of stealing the spotlight tonight, but we don't get to do this very often. This is the bumper crop, if you will, of KLA alumni who were in this program four or sometimes five years ago, who are graduating from college. And this year, I'm not going to read all their names, they're not here, and there wouldn't have been space for them, but we have, looks like, close to 15 college graduates from the KLA program who have made it through the next milestone. So, I just, maybe we can do that another night, have a KLA college night. But anyway, I want to congratulate all those students. And I thought there might be someone who wants to say something to city council.
We just want to say that we appreciate all the support. It's been very valuable in keeping KLA running for nine years, and hopefully, we continue the support in the coming years as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I have all the KLA students, my god, this is my school. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all the people that are in the overflow room or rooms, there are lots of seats now in council chamber. If you would like to make your way to council chambers, please do so.
I guess we could have them count off, but...
Again, if you're in one of the overflow rooms, you can make your way to council chambers. We have lots of seats that have opened up now. All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is there any item that anyone has any questions about or would like us to consider separately? Or would like to highlight?
I just have a comments, a couple of comments about items G and H.
Should I go ahead and do that? Okay.
Didn't know if anybody else wanted to chime in. So, item G is, references three different applications, actually, for a whole series of infrastructure projects aimed at making our city better in a whole host of ways. But the thing that I really want to highlight is that the first of those applications is for, well, two of those applications are actually to the TDA for funding for these infrastructure projects to make Asheville, again, help with our infrastructure, sidewalks, streetscapes, parking decks, things like that, and as well as the civic center. And I just, you know, there's been a lot of discussion and a lot of frustration in the community about the perception of lack of support from the tourist, from the tourist industry of the city and of our infrastructure and of our very real needs. And I just want to point out that one of these applications is coming in under something called the Major Works Program that the TDA created, especially really for the city of Asheville. And it will, it allows us to put forward this grant application, which is a multi-year funding application for ultimately $20 million worth of funding from the TDA, again, for Asheville's infrastructure needs. So, and I just want to, again, point out, this is sort of one step in, I think, a series of steps to help address that concern that the tourism industry, and particularly that occupancy tax, isn't supporting the city in the way that people want it to be. So, this is a, this is a big deal, and we will know later this year whether that grant application is accepted. But this is, this is the first step in that, and it's a, it's a big deal. $20 million, seven years, it's a big deal. The other thing I just wanted to highlight was item H, which is the recycling grant from the state to expand recycling into additional public housing units, Hill Crest and Deverview. And I just want to comment that that's, it's great that we're doing that. I think those are communities that have long wanted that service, and I'm just happy that we're expanding into them.
Someone down here, anybody down here? Questions? Comments? A motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the approval of the consent agenda? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. ADU people, are there more people in the overflow room, or is this everybody? Do you know? Okay, if anybody's left in the overflow rooms, we have a few more seats up front. Please make your way to the council chambers. All right, we have two present, actually, we have a presentation with two parts. It is the Asheville Emotion Plan presentation, and Mariate, I have on my agenda, is making this presentation. She is, she is running furiously right now, listening to us on the speaker. She's there, she is. She's making a star appearance. Mariate.
You're up, Mariate.
Oh, Mariate, yeah. Sorry, I was trying to make it here.
We could see you struggle through this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I am Mariate Chavelli. I am the Transportation Planning Manager and the Project Manager for the Asheville Emotion Plan. Tonight, we are presenting the Asheville Emotion for adoption by this body. This is an effort that lasted about a year and a half and provides a strategy for the city to address the challenges of implementing multimodal transportation systems with an integrated approach that takes into consideration the Asheville unique line use and transportation characteristics. I am going to show you a five-minute video, and then Stephen Stansberry from Kimley Horn, the Project Manager for this plan, is going to make a brief presentation.
The city of Asheville recognizes that our streets were designed with cars in mind, but not as easy to travel without a car, whether on foot, on bike, or by bus. So, in August of 2014, we began to change that. The goal was to have a plan that made sure sidewalks, bike lanes, greenways, and bus routes were available where people needed them and took them to where they wanted to go. Steered by significant input from the community, including bicyclists, pedestrians, transit riders, business owners, neighborhood advocates, elected officials, and many others, the Asheville Emotion Plan was born. Ideal transportation options in Asheville begin with connections that will include enough bike lanes, sidewalks, greenways, and transit buses that anyone can get anywhere in the city quickly and easily without a car. The AIM Plan is a guide to help us connect and complete extensive networks for travel across town using a variety of transportation options. This improved transportation network will transform the way we move throughout our city, connecting north, east, south, and west. These connected transportation networks will also enhance our quality of life, positively affect the health of the community, and increase access to jobs. The AIM Plan identifies transformative projects for pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit riders. Transformative projects are projects vital to connecting neighborhoods in the north, south, east, and west to the core of the city and therefore to one another. Their connectivity makes them a high priority project, so you'll see these projects in future annual budgets as we build new networks over time. We often have bike, pedestrian, transit, and human master plans, all created with extensive community input. These are framework plans, and they help us determine which projects are needed where. For instance, are bike lanes a priority, or are sidewalks more important along a particular street? Framework plans identify, prioritize, and connect pedestrian, bike, transiting, and road projects. The plans provide staff with guidance for what a bike or pedestrian framework street can look like. Pedestrian framework plan recommendations include improvements in ADA-compliant access to bus stops, greenways, and schools. Transit framework plan recommendations include increasing bus routes to span the city from north to south and from east to west. It also recommends a downtown circulation that serves downtown and its neighborhoods. Bicycle framework plan recommendations include a bicycle network that serves the needs, skills, and desires of a range of bicyclists. The plan links existing and proposed bike lanes and greenways while providing north, south, and east-west travel through the downtown area. The plan's routes connect major destinations throughout Asheville, including parks, schools, and other locations along the French Broad River. Greenway framework plan recommendations include a variety of forms and uses, such as natural trails and paved pathways that extend current greenways out to the north, east, and west. Now, with the AIM Plan in place, we have the guidelines for successfully realizing the vision of our transportation projects. The AIM Plan provides staff with the means for prioritizing those transportation projects identified in framework plans based on these criteria: economic vitality, social equity, community biodiversity, travel mode shift, and public sentiment. Once a project is selected, the street's function and connections are considered, and recommendations for dimensions and feet allocated are determined for sidewalks, bikes, and cars, so that each mode of transportation is safely and efficiently integrated. This is how it works. Based on the size of this street and its function of connecting dense neighborhoods to the business district, the AIM Plan recommends wide sidewalks, landscaping adventures, street parking, transit stops, and separated bike lanes to provide an ideal travel experience for all types of transportation, with sidewalks always a priority. Additionally, the framework plans help us determine needs that the community is identifying. This street was identified in the bicycle framework plan to be a priority route connecting to the city's bike network. In this instance, however, the pedestrian and transit plans did not show this street to be a high priority route for those modes of transportation. So, the pedestrian connections will be kept to a minimum, and the city will spend its limited resources on the community's priority through bike lanes. So, to improve this street for bicyclists, the AIM Plan recommends a two-way bike lane separated from traffic by a two-door buffer. Using the AIM Plan's new tools for prioritizing and connecting projects, city staff can now design this project the best means it will need. You can read the AIM Plan in its entirety at www ashvilleinc.gov/transportation.
Good evening. Again, my name is Stephen Stansberry, and I'm with Kimley Horn Associates. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to help facilitate the creation of your strategy. Again, this is your community's strategy. All we did was help facilitate a lot of the dialogue that goes into these sorts of things. I'll begin very briefly by stating that there wouldn't be a need for enumerating a strategy if there was enough space and enough money to build all the things that are in existing plans. But the emphasis on urbanism over the past several years has highlighted this conflict, where we simply don't have enough space to accommodate all the things that people might want. There also isn't enough money. And as a result, we really do need to express as a community what our priorities are and also determine how we're going to engage in the discussion about trade-offs. If we're going to invest in one thing, how do we accommodate the other things that we might leave out elsewhere in the community? I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, because I know there's a lot of content with almost a year and a half of effort that went into this, but there were some unique things that came from this process. They're very specific to Asheville. They're not from anyplace else, and absent the involvement of the public, this project really wouldn't be possible to manifest itself in the way that it did. But you do now have a unique way to consider community context. I'll explain that in a moment. We also created a new street typology. It was necessary to modernize your strategy so that it better aligned with other planning efforts. And then, we updated the bike plan. It was a good plan, it just needed to be updated. There's been a lot of things that have changed in our, in our industry, and we wanted to reflect those. And then, we also needed to express a method with which to ensure that the selection of projects moving forward more closely aligns with a host and a variety of community initiatives, not just movement of people and cars throughout the community. I think the public expects that. We heard that from them clearly, and we wanted to be sure that we were bringing forward an integrated strategy. And then, finally, really, just this notion of an integrated approach. I mentioned earlier that this really is a community-driven planning process. There was a significant amount of public engagement. It's incredibly important. There was a lot of technical information that was also balancing off the information that we collected from the general public. I wanted to bring some level of confidence. There was a lot of opportunity for accessing and engaging this process. Clearly, we'd love to have connected with everyone, but we did make a concerted effort. And as you can see here, the variety of methods with which we connected with the public ranged anywhere from digital online surveys to in-person stakeholder meetings, as well as an oversight committee, workshops, charrettes, and referencing involvement and getting guidance from the multimodal commission. You put us in good hands. We had an oversight committee that was a broad cross-section of your community, incredibly sharp group of individuals that helped guide us throughout the process and really helped sift through, in some cases, the competing interests, once again, between maybe what technical analysis might state and what community priorities might be. And again, just to highlight, not just the individuals, but to notate that we've got a variety of different agencies and advocacy groups that are highlighted within that composition of the group. Every good plan's got a toolbox. I won't go over the details of this, but we use the phrase "framework plans" really as a surrogate to expressing your existing plans. You've got a lot of very good plans that serve as the foundation for this. Those plans remain relevant. And in fact, the way this strategy is structured, they remain input values to future decision-making, almost elevating the importance of those plans in the future. Street types I mentioned a moment ago, community types is something new, and then, design guidance, which really offers us a better understanding of that situation where we wish we had more space, but we don't. And so, there... space, but we don't, and so therefore we need some kind of guidance as to what to prioritize within that limited amount of ride of way. Framework plans, as I mentioned, should still be updated. These are still important plans. They are where all of the priority projects were selected from. These are important processes, not to be taken lightly, and we would encourage their continued investment in offering guidance to the strategy overall. But the design priorities are really going to begin to help inform you, make decisions incrementally as capital projects are selected over time. And I'll talk about capital projects, but I can't do so without also balancing that against policy recommendations. There's a very clear enunciation within this strategy that this is a combined effort between capital dollars being spent on infrastructure, as well as aligning your existing policies and codes to better advance the causes that this community has set are their priorities. And that prioritization process essentially needs to include things beyond just traditional transportation performance metrics. That became very clear when we spoke with the public. You heard highlighted in the film that public support, economic vitality, community vibrancy, social equity, and the propensity for mode shift really were the screening process to identify projects that we characterized as being most transformative. And those transformative projects are those that are organized into things that we can understand: bike, transit, and more complete streets. And with that, entertain any questions, and thank you once again for your support throughout the planning process.
Other questions? We have a resolution to adopt the Asheville Motion Plan for consideration at this point. You have some comments?
I do. Should we put the motion on the table?
You want to make the motion?
I'm happy to make the motion, so I make... Do I need to read all of this, or just make the motion that we adopt the plan?
Just make the motion.
I make the motion that we adopt the plan.
Second.
So again, just a couple of comments on this. When this plan was started, I was in a very different role, and I'm just really excited to see it done. In the 15 years that I've been working on land use and transportation issues, this is the first time that I've seen this marriage of land use and transportation come together in a plan, and so thank you very much. I'm really hopeful about that this is going to take us down the road to prioritizing our projects and making investments in the way that they should be made, that are, again, going to help with the mode shift and all of that. I think it's wonderful. I hope that, having done this now, that we can move very quickly into a discussion about resources and how we pay for this, all of this infrastructure change. And I think it's important to realize it's not just some of the challenges that we're going to face in implementing this plan are not just around dollars, but they're also going to be around... A number of these streets are DOT streets. They're not our streets. So I hope that we can move into a process of identifying the big challenges that we face in implementing this plan and start to figure out how we're going to tackle them and continue to move down the road toward implementation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to approve the plan?
Ken Michael Love. I would like to know what the cost of this study was and what the cost will be to implement it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on the motion? Raya, do you have the answer to the cost of the study?
Yes, the study was $336,000.
$336,000. And I assume the cost of implementation, do we have an idea of that?
So what we did was to develop a matrix that helped us, giving us an idea of how all these improvements fitting together, how much they would cost, but we don't have cost per project.
Can I just ask, was all of the cost of the study paid for by the city, or did we have grants that helped fund it?
We have $200,000 that came from the Federal Highway Administration, and then the rest came from the city funds.
Okay, thank you. That's good clarification.
Yep.
All right, I didn't see anyone else who wanted to comment on the motion to approve the plan, but if there's anyone else... No? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, thank you very much, and thank you for visiting with us tonight to present the plan. Barbara, we are entering the public hearings portion of our agenda. The first item, Item A, is a public hearing to consider the fiscal year 2016-17 annual operating budget. And Barbara Whitehorn, our finance director, is here to make the presentation, which we've heard several times before, but part of our process is to hear it again tonight.
So I just brought a sheet that has some kind of reminders for where we are with the budget. The total budget is $170.4 million. Of course, that includes inter-fund transfers. It's $161 million net of those transfers. There were some direction from council at the last meeting, and that included to look at our third quarter evaluation of where we anticipated to be with fund balance and to use that additional $800,000 that we had identified in the Lee Walker Heights project. So you can see that reflected here in the $2.18 million from 1.38... Excuse me. We also added $2,000 for the Festival of Neighborhoods, and then we got direction today to add an additional expenditure for short-term rental staffing in the DSD department and related equipment. So that's $106,000. So any questions or anything else you want me to answer while I'm here? Hopefully, I got everything you all had asked from the previous meeting.
Any other questions for Barbara?
I think we got an email on the short-term rental positions that I'm now realizing I didn't get a chance to read. I think that just came in today, right? Can you just talk a little bit about that?
It's a second full-time position for inspections and a part-time administrative person to follow up on the cases and keep track of the records.
So one and a half?
Yes, one and a half additional positions to the one full-time position we have now. And we have to keep an eye on legal services and the need for outside counsel, but there's not a specific request for that at this time.
And what's included in that $106,000 is we estimated the two positions' total salary and benefits for a full year would be $95,000, and then we said probably 75% of a year, and then we added in $35,000 for equipment, including a vehicle.
Okay, any other questions? Tonight, we do need a motion. No, we don't need a motion.
Nope.
Okay. So maybe next time, we're going to adopt this. Tonight is just the public hearing. Okay. I will open the public hearing if there's anyone wishing to comment on the budget. All right, we've got a few takers. Yes, ma'am, over here. Yes, you. And if you would just state your name, and each speaker gets three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Asheville City Council. My name is Maureen Quinn. I commented last week at the regular meeting about the need for development of a new aquatic center in Buncombe County. I'd like to refer to Page 127 of the proposed budget. It states, "The swimming pools project address safety and maintenance concerns at the Melvern Hills, Walton Street, and Recreation Park city pools. Work would address the pools themselves as well as handicap access issues, the bath house, support features, and ongoing maintenance issues. Project funding debt financing for fiscal year 2017 is approximately $799,000, and for fiscal year 2018, it's $1,250,000." I read in an article from the Asheville Citizen Times from October 2015 that states the Melvern Hills pool was built in 1921. The other two pools are over 40 years old. I'm familiar with the Rec Park Pool. It's an outdoor pool rarely used more than 90 days per year. I understand that the Buncombe County School Superintendent, Dr. Tony Baldwin, will be presenting a proposal to the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners at their meeting on May 31 regarding the building of a new aquatic center. That is great, but this is a different issue. I do not think spending $2 million shoring up pools that are outdated and do not meet today's standards is an effective use of money. Please consider cutting that line item by half and earmarking the remainder for new updated indoor community pools in locations accessible to all people. If planned correctly, community pools could be income generating rather than a bottomless hole of endless maintenance issues. I realize that these community pools have a place in history. Their story in history can be memorialized with plaques in the new facility, but honestly, new facilities are needed. Where people with special needs can be better served, where people of all ages will have equal access to learn to swim in water aerobic classes, family swim, competitive swimming in classrooms for training and certifications. Seriously reconsider this allocation of money from meeting short-term needs to meeting the long-term goals. We are losing a generation of swimmers as we wait for something better. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, in the back?
Hi, I'm Bella Jackson. Before... My comment is in reference to the police request in the budget for a crime analyst. Before I end my comment, I just want to say I appreciate council's effort to formalize a position on the citizen police advisory for a resident of public housing. I think that's a wonderful tribute to a leader we lost, Keith. I just want to say I appreciate that. Most of y'all know my husband. He wanted to... Calvin, he wanted to be here tonight, but I'm speaking for him, for my family, for my community. Years ago, a couple of years ago, Calvin was called in under the Changing Together program and basically told on behalf of the city, "We're watching you. We're waiting for you to mess up." We have these programs, but the overall message was very threatening to us, to our family. It felt like our community was expecting us to fail. When we're looking at funding options and ways to spend our money to make our communities safer, we have two choices, right? When we're looking at the outcomes, the fact that my community, which is poverty, which is minority community, has more crime. You guys either have to believe that people of color are more prone to violence and crime, or you believe that there's something wrong with the systems that we enact upon by community, that our system either criminalizes blackness, or that black people are just more prone to break laws, right? And I'm assuming none of y'all are going to stand up here and say that to me. So if we're going with the argument that the way in which we treat our minority communities creates crime, then let's not keep funding things that don't work, things that keep putting our black and brown children behind prison bars at a rate that far surpasses the white children right across the bridge in Markford. We know as a society that the Rudy Giuliani broken window style of policing is not effective because now we have the data, right? That it was lead poisoning poor children, causing their brains to not grow in ways that allow you to weigh complex situations and make the best choice. We know that now. So let's not ascribe to these out-of-date theories that by having more police on the street, we will eliminate crime. It's not true. It's not how it works. We need to invest in our infrastructure, invest in transit, let people have jobs, have ways to get to work, and they won't need to do these things that we're trying to eliminate by putting more police on the street. We're raising three young boys in public housing, right? We're very involved in our community. My husband and I both chair NRC, we're both involved in city commissions. I'm going to UNCA in the fall. Please choose my children's future and invest our money wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have this really annoying rule in here, you can't clap. So remember that when we get to your topic, but...
[laughing]
Yes, would you like to speak?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. All right, here we go. Good evening, city council members. I am James Gambrell. Hello, folks. Okay, I am representing the People's Voice on Transportational Equality. I am here tonight to thank you for making transit a priority in this year's budget. Yay, people. Okay, let's see. Thanks for funding services to Hinder Siouxville Road hourly, for increasing transit staff, and for adding much-needed evening hours, helping people access jobs, and basic necessities. Thank you for listening to the voice of folks whose only transportation is the bus.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Michael Love.
Ken Michael Love, former mayor and city manager. Remove the funding of Pack Place Capital Improvements, Page 271, $2 million to be spent in 2017. This project is the result of heavy-handed work by Mayor Manheimer, former Vice Mayor Hunt, City Manager Jackson, and Pam Myers, conjuring up an illegal action against Pack Place boards. On April 12, 16, there was further political favoritism in Resolution 1684 where you waived the permit fees, $90,000 for the Asheville Art Museum. Quote, "In this instance, while the building is owned by the city, it is neither occupied nor operated by the city," end quote, a violation of the city policy. Cancel the waiver of the fees of that $90,000. What does the art museum have on the city council to warrant such political favoritism? According to your budget, Page 67, you're only allocating $148,400 to 17 agencies, yet you're giving $2,090,000 in cash and $5 million in in-kind rent relief to the art museum. Where is a sense in such misplaced priorities? This is a misuse of adverbal tax. The city manager states, quote, "Capital investment needs continue to far exceed available resources which force staff to work diligently to prioritize projects," end quote. Yet the city continues to fund the Asheville Art Museum big time. Your actions are inconsistent with the political favoritism, and the political favoritism is obvious. Just examine your lease with the US government for the armory. You're charging them $110,000. Bottom line, in five years, city taxpayers will have contributed $7,900,000 to the art museum, and the art museum will have paid $50,000 in rent. The fact is, the art museum never has been able to pay rent, and the current art museum budget is building maintenance... For building maintenance is dependent upon the county. What happens if the county doesn't fund that $400,000? I have other matters to discuss, but I'll leave you a memo on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, in the back.
Good evening, council. Appreciate your service to our community. I'm Reverend Amy Cantrell. I'm here with Be Loved Asheville, and I also help support the People's Transportation Campaign. Well, thank you for your investment in transit. The AIM project shows you how desperately we need that, and many in our community are saying yay with James tonight for that. I also want to come and just talk about stewardship, which in my role as a pastor is a word that I've heard a lot. So many of us are here tonight to talk as taxpayers about stewardship over our budget, particularly the position for the new crime analyst. Many of us are concerned about needing to do due diligence in looking at our systems, our tools, our personnel, and our programs, and how they're used in our community. We know that in many places across the country, there is a great struggle about the ways that policing has been used to reinforce racism and classism in communities to the detriment and death of many... And so we come tonight to say that we need to look at the way that we invest, and where we invest matters. My spiritual tradition says this, where your treasure is, there your heart will be also. And so we know that when we put treasure into transit, then the heart of the people increases. People are able to access basic necessities. People are able to access jobs. This year, you increased the budget for evening service. We know that that will translate into folks being able to go to work and get jobs that they've never had access to before. These are things that we know reduce crime. And so I think that maybe a better stewardship of our investment is not into systems that may perpetuate racism and classism in our communities simply by the way we analyze current outcomes, but rather to invest in those communities, to put our treasure where the people's heart is. We have an urgent need for housing in this community. I don't need to tell you all this. We've sat around tables and talked about this. Where our treasure is, there our heart is. I know many, many people I sat with this afternoon that will sleep on our streets tonight, and for me, that keeps me up at night, and I hope it does you until we find a solution to the housing crisis. Money in the operational budget for a staff position could create lots of housing in our community. And let me just say this one thing slightly off-topic, but not for tonight, that when we look at ADUs, we make a choice about homestays or home life. Homelessness is life and death, and so I urge you to not put an even greater hole into the lack of affordable housing, but consider home life over homestays. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Peterson.
I'd like to add extra time if I can get some people out there. I need three people to raise their hand. Thank you. Thank you very much. I hope I'm not going to bore you with this. November 16th of last year, I called City Manager Gary Jackson again, and I said, "Gary, you're $7 million in the hole." But Gary said, "Well, we're not going to raise taxes." That was pretty clever, Gary. You didn't raise taxes, you raised fees and charges. Now, anybody out there in TV land that's watching this, I know budgets are boring. People don't like to look at it. You can go online, and you can look and see what this corrupt council has done to your budget. And I'm going to tell you one more thing. This budget, and I'm hoping you new members, if you look at your '17 and '18 fiscal budget, Gary, that was very clever too. You put all your CIP on there. That's $60 million. You also have been very clever in your river. You're going to change the zoning, and the reason why, folks, when they change the zoning, then when they pass all these millions of dollars that you taxpayers are going to pay, and you are going to pay, they don't have to go to a vote. They get to pick it right here. That's scary. Now, you, Gary, you also, in your CIP, you say $60 million that you're going to spend on the river. I might add a river that floods, makes no sense, but you've got to be a genius as far as construction. Now, I'm in the construction business. If you think that your number of 60 million is going to hold up in the construction business that annually goes up 10%, then you need to be working the construction company.
Mr. Peterson, you can address council.
I'm going to address you and council, and I might add too, that your law firm is making a lot of money on these confiscations, and you are too. So you're not sitting there on your seat where you're not feathering your nest either. Now, I have a right to talk. This is a democracy, unlike some of you up there that don't believe in a democracy. But I'm going to tell you, the taxpayers aren't going to wake up in about three years. Y'all have been very clever, but guess what? You know, let's talk about your transit, and I do believe poor people have a right to be on transit, but you've got a $4 million hole in that budget. It is being mismanaged. Four million. Your rainy day fund, you're taking from it again. You've got the bare minimum rainy day fund. I guess rainy day fund, you don't expect a flood, Gary, but that's okay. It's going to come. That's a dangerous level for your rainy day fund. The money that you were planning to spend in the next three years, you shouldn't have 15 million in there. You should have 40 million, just to protect the taxpayers. Your legal fees, and I see Ms. Curran there, our legal lawyer...
Mr. Peterson, please just address council.
She has 12 people on her staff, and I want you new councils, her budget's $1 million. That's not hard math. A million dollars into 12, that's $140,000 a person. Good job. Your storm tax, you've got 6 million in that budget, but yet this year, you're only spending $600,000 on storm tax. Your numbers don't add up. It's a Ponzi scheme, and it's getting ready to blow up. Ah, let's see here. Your greenways, you are confiscating, not only did you take my property on the river that you didn't need, but you're taking hundreds of acres. You're bringing it off the tax book. That's fine. You're getting this land. Now, I'm going to sue you. I'm going to get extra money, and so is everybody else that's being confiscated. I don't see that in your budget, Gary. Now, that's going to be about at least another 12 million. Let's see here. You know, taking people's property for Belgian beer, you all ought to be ashamed of yourselves for those trucks. And I might add too, you have a bridge on the river. It is owned by the railroad. It is a 100-year-old bridge. It's going to take 6, $7 million to get that bridge ripe for the Belgian beer trucks. Gary, that's not in your budget. So I'm going to be here every year like I have been for the last three years, and yes, mayor, you can laugh. It's all funny, isn't it?
It is not funny. I would just like you...
It's the taxpayers' money.
Mr. Peterson, I would like you to address council.
And you are feathering your nest, okay? So I just want everybody to know...
All right, we're done. Thank you.
...to the council. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Amory, I'm the Chair of the Longchamp Transit Commission, and I'm here to speak in support of the additional funding for transit that you've included in the proposed budget. This increased funding will provide for three very important improvements, an additional bus on the S-3 route to the airport. This will relieve overcrowding, improve the frequency of service, and it will also provide new service along Long Shoals Road and Biltmore Park, thus serving apartments, schools, and a large number of jobs that are not currently accessible to people who depend on the transit system. The second improvement, which Amy and James both referred to, is the additional early and late service, which again will provide access to more jobs. The third improvement is a new transit staff member. I know this isn't as exciting as putting new service out on the street, but as someone who's spent his entire career as a transit planner, I know how important it is to have adequate staff to make sure that the system is functioning smoothly and to look for improvements in service. So I thank you for including this additional funding for transit, and we look forward to implementing the improvements over the coming year.
Thanks for your service, Mr. Amory.
Thank you. Yes.
Tough act to follow. Last two.
Gwen's confiscating my gavel, so...
Good evening to you all. It's good to see some familiar faces and some new ones. I'm Anthony Mitchell. I'm the Vice Chair of the Asheville Transit Committee, and on behalf of our board, thank you so much for your time and giving us an opportunity to speak this evening. Accepting and including our recommendations for that $900,000 into the things that Bruce was, we're just making mention of, I think sends a clear message to our citizens that we're invested in helping them get to work, get to school, get to shopping locations, houses of worship, and more. And we know that as Asheville continues to prosper, and we know that it will, that infrastructure needs will grow over time, and we as a board would like to ask that you continue to make public transit a priority in proactively solving those issues and the convenience needs of citizens and visitors alike in the years to come. And in light of some of the things that maybe we heard tonight, this is also an example of our government process working. We have boards that listen to the needs of our citizens, and no, it's not a perfect system. We all know that, but in the case of what we dealt with, the voices and needs of our community have been heard and attended to. And there are more aesthetically pleasing things to deal with than funding transit and things like that, but when it comes to the needs of our city, a beauty contest is not what solves those issues. So we appreciate your trusting, validating the time and hard work that we put in as a committee and as a board, and hopefully with some of what you've seen tonight with us showing up and visiting with you, that we value our role in assisting you and the rest of the local government in moving the master transit plan forward. And last but not least, use your annual bus pass. I know you all have one. And we would love to get your ridership feedback on that, so thank you for your time and for your help.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
My name is Desiree Smith, and I'd like to introduce myself before I provide comments on the proposed budget, specifically the proposal to fund a new position under the heading of Public Safety for Crime Analyst. For the last five years, I've worked as a licensed clinical social worker facilitating emergency psychiatric assessments in our local emergency rooms. By a conservative estimate, I believe I have met with more than 3,000 people in western North Carolina who are having trouble with suicidal or homicidal thoughts, who are experiencing various symptoms of psychosis, who are withdrawing from drugs or alcohol, and who are doing those things in the context of poverty. Having lived in the District of Columbia for 10 years, I'm especially grateful to speak to you today about the budget. As you might know, the residents of the District of Columbia are taxed but don't have a representative elected to the body that decides how to spend that money. First, I'd like to talk about the history of law enforcement in this country. Then, I'll talk about the wounds created by that history. Third, I'll make a proposal for healing those wounds, and finally, I'll offer more gratitude. But first, some more gratitude. I read about the budget in the Mountain Express. I mention that because I want the people listening to know that speaking to council doesn't require research or any specialized knowledge. I understand that the largest single category in the city's budget is public safety, which accounts for 40% of the budget. It's proposed that that budget be increased by $1.4 million, in part to fund this new position. This position is called Crime Analyst. I'm here to tell you that in the 6,000 hours I have spent talking to poor people and working-class people of all colors in western North Carolina, no one has ever said, "What I really need is a crime analyst." They've mentioned the lack of affordable housing, the lack of reliable public transportation. They have mentioned working more than one job. Next, I'd like to talk about the history of law enforcement in our country. Police departments were created in this country to suppress worker riots in the north and to capture escaped slaves in the south. Today, we see that legacy of anti-black racism and discrimination against poor people when we look at our city budget and the policing practices of Asheville City Police Department.
Thank you. Ma'am?
I would like to suggest that the position for Crime Analyst is not funded.
You're out of time.
Is not funded.
Are you refusing to stop talking?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Wasn't sure if we were... Can I be more trouble tonight? Anyone else? Ma'am, and if you want to email us your comments, please feel free. Some people will submit them to us in writing.
I'd love to see the rest of them.
I would, that would be acceptable. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on the budget? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing, and we will take this up again. What is our date, Maggie?
June 14.
On June 14. That's when we will finally actually vote on the budget.
May we try to be vocal comment at that time?
This is the public hearing.
Okay. So, my counselor's here. We, that item will be on the agenda in June, and we will vote on it at that time. And we don't typically take public comment because this is the public hearing on the budget. All right.
Mayor, may I just make a brief comment?
Yes.
In regards to the concerns being brought up about the crime analyst at our, I'm trying to remember if it was the work session or the last meeting when we talked about this, I asked Police Chief Hooper specifically about that item, and what are we doing with that, and what is the purpose behind it, and what are the outcomes associated with it? So, A, I wanted you to know the question is asked, and the answer is on the record. And secondly, in my email inbox today, I saw that she had responded in writing to someone else inquiring about that, and it may be helpful to have that information spread more broadly rather than me reading a fairly lengthy email to you right now. I would love for folks who are interested in this to be able to have that perspective and kind of see what is that for? What are we doing there? That would be very helpful.
We will, we will make a concerted effort to broadcast that information, add it to the website. We are providing highlights on the budget in the, on the webpage, and we will make sure that we, we put a feature on this position and what it will do in terms of enhancing community-oriented policing and move the department in the direction that the community wants it to go.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our public hearings agenda concerns the Asheville outlets. The first is a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit for the construction of a two-story, 75,000-square-foot retail building and a one-story, 8,000-square-foot retail building on property located at 800 Brevard Road. And this first item is a quasi-judicial matter, and I'm going to let the city attorney, Robin Curran, handle it. And as a housekeeping, if there's anyone here wishing to speak on this item, please come forward and be sworn by the city clerk.
Thank you, mayor, members of council, members of the public. As the mayor has indicated, this is a Level 3 site plan review for Phase 3 of the Asheville Outlet Mall. The property is a fairly large site, approximately 54 acres, containing two parcels located off of Brevard Road. The larger of the two sites is approximately 45 acres and supports the largely or newly renovated outlet mall. The parcel to the south is almost nine acres and had formerly supported the Belks Department Store, but was recently renovated for a new Field and Stream Store. The property is accessed primarily off of Brevard Road through the two main entrances, with the northern entrance located here being the more prominent entrance, with the second entrance located a little further south. There are also two tertiary entrances located off of Ridgefield here and here. The majority of the development of this, of this phase of construction is in the southern portion of the property, and so those Ridgefield entrances may be more commonly used. Here's another view of the existing... renovated outlet mall. The parcel to the south is almost nine acres and had formerly supported the Belks Department Store but was recently renovated for a new Field and Stream store. The property is accessed primarily off of Brevard Road through the two main entrances with the northern entrance located here being the more prominent entrance with the second entrance located a little further south. There are also two tertiary entrances located off of Ridgefield here and here. The majority of the development of this phase of construction is in the southern portion of the property, and so those Ridgefield entrances may be more commonly used. Here's another view of the existing conditions plan, and you can see the more prominent parcel or the parcel where most of the development will occur is the southern parcel with the Ridgefield entrances located here and here. And that was the site of the former Belks. I should also mention that you may have noticed in the aerial map, and then also here is a third parcel that currently supports the Diller's property. That property is not included in this application, it is owned separately and managed separately. Turning to the site plan, proposed site plan, you can see the buildings highlighted in yellow are the two new buildings that are being proposed. Building 3A is a one-story or two, one and a half or two-story retail building, about 75,000 square feet. Building 3B is a smaller one-story, 8,000-square-foot building. Combined, the two buildings are approximately 83,000 square feet. That would not normally trigger a Level 3 site plan review. However, the UDO requires that projects that are built within 500 feet by the same developer or owner within three years be combined for purposes of establishing review. So, when you add the new 83,000, or excuse me, 75,000 and 8,000-square-foot buildings to the newly constructed Field and Stream, we are now over the 100,000 Level 3 threshold. So, that is the purpose of the review or the quasi-judicial hearing tonight. The project also, as being a large retail development, requires what we call, informally called, a big-box retail checklist, and requires that we... Let's see if I can zoom out a little bit here. Look at some of the building features of the structure so that we can ensure that it meets certain goals for fenestration and pedestrian engagement. And so, this project has been evaluated for... It's a points-weighted evaluation, and this project has been evaluated for its ability to meet the minimum number of points. Because of the zoning districts located in, they're actually not required to meet those points. However, this project easily satisfies those requirements. And so, it's well in excess of the 100 points that are recommended for a large retail box. And those are the building elevations for the one-and-a-half-story, the primary building. And then, also the building elevations for the smaller one-story... I think that's as far out as it could go. The smaller one-story, 8,000-square-foot building. That concludes my introduction. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or you may choose to open it up for the public hearing or-
I'm going to hand it over to Robin.
Yeah, just real quick, just so that the public will know, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, which is different than a legislative hearing. And as you've noticed, the mayor has already asked anyone who was going to speak to be sworn in. That's part of the quasi-judicial procedure, so that the testimony must be sworn. The other thing is that any decision reached by council must be based on substantial material and competent evidence. And what that means is that the evidence that's presented tonight should relate to the conditional use permit standards, which are set forth in the UDO. There should not be any testimony outside of those particular factors. Also, things like hearsay and people who aren't here or what someone else said should not be presented to council. Those seven standards, the council will find that the applicant either did or did not present evidence to support them. Then there will be a vote. With respect to a conditional use permit, please note that even though there's a vote tonight, the council will adopt written findings of fact and conclusions of law, which will be presented at the next hearing. Now, having said that, staff has presented their report under oath, and at this time, I will... I can turn it over to the mayor, but the applicant should come forward to present its case.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of council. My name is Lou Visid, I'm representing the applicant tonight. I also have with me Chris Day from Civil Design Concepts, he's the engineer on the project, as well as Tom and Stephanie Caravan, representing the applicant. I'll try to be redundant, but we'll have to get this evidence in, as Robin indicated. Let me just say a couple of words about the Asheville Outlets Project. It's one I'm very proud of, and I think the city should be very proud of. It phases one and two, took a deteriorating mall that was half-empty, repurposed it, renovated it. It's now a very successful and, I think aesthetically pleasing outlet mall, which employs over 1,000 employees now. And it's also a great facility for all of us who live in this community to visit and shop. I would like to ask that, of course, that our application be admitted to evidence together with the staff report, including all of the exhibits which are attached, which are the maps, A, B, and C, the TRC comments, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes excerpt, the Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation Form. And also, the applicant has submitted a statement on the seven findings of fact, which you have in your package. And I'd like to be sure, Robin, that all of that is properly admitted into evidence.
Okay.
That being said, we think the staff's report has spelled this project out. We think it'll be a good addition to what is already out there. As far as we know, there have been absolutely no opposition, no complaints. We think it'll be a great addition to the project, and would like to ask that you give favorable consideration to this conditional use permit. And that being said, we're here, we're ready to answer any questions that you might have.
That's fine. Do you want any of your people here with you to speak or present any evidence?
I might ask Chris Day just to make a couple of comments.
Okay, and for the record, all your applications and your statements and elevations are all you're asking they be admitted?
That they be admitted into evidence.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Chris, you've done such a fine job on this, I think you'll have the opportunity to say a few words. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Chris Day with Civil Design Concepts. We really appreciate the opportunity to work with Caravan Associates and Asheville Development, Asheville Retail Associates on the redevelopment of the outlet center over there. The project, as reported and submitted, does include up to 83,000 square feet of retail. The project does utilize existing infrastructure that is in place, and a traffic study was performed associated with the project, and no issues or mitigation was recommended, and that was approved by staff. I'm available for any questions you may have regarding the project.
Okay, at this point, if there's any members from the public that have evidence relating to the seven standards they'd like to present to council, this is the opportunity to do that. Okay, I think that's all, and I would turn it over to council to deliberate, make a motion, or whatever they see fit.
Questions, comments, a motion?
I move to approve the conditional use permit for the two-story, 75,000-square-foot retail building and one-story, 8,000-square-foot retail building. And...
Specific motion because it's a-
You want a specific motion? You find that it meets the seven requirements of a conditional use permit?
Yes, that's probably the best motion.
Yep, there you go, you got it.
Based on the evidence presented.
That's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. A motion and a second? All right. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, Part 2 of this is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the signage plan for Asheville Outlets located at 800 Brevard Road. This one is legislative and not a conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The Unified Development Sign Code provides a special option for large projects and for projects that have special requirements for signage and identification to pursue what's called a signage plan. So, back in... I'm sorry, I forget, but a couple of years ago, the Asheville Outlets, at the beginning of their renovation and redevelopment, submitted an application for signage plan. That plan was approved, and it included what they refer to as, I think it was sign type 3. This is a freestanding, multi-tenant development sign located at the main entrance off of Brevard Road that I had pointed out in the earlier hearing. Regardless of the sign plan, the current ordinance would allow a single 200-square-foot multi-tenant sign, no taller than 25 square feet, or excuse me, 25 feet in height. This particular, the existing sign, meets that requirement, as does the newly proposed sign. The only difference between the two signs are some of the dimensions. So, you can see that it moves from a taller, narrower structure to something that's a little bit shorter and a little bit more square. The square footage is the same, it remains at 200 square feet. The height gets reduced, the width gets widened, and additional tenant panels are added. So, the previous sign had four, or excuse me, six tenant panels, and the applicant is requesting a redesigned sign that would allow up to 10 panels. Even though this sign complies under the current ordinance, it deviates from what was originally approved in the original signage plan, and so it does require an amendment to that plan and approval by council.
Be happy to answer any questions, or if there are any questions for the applicant? Questions? Would the applicant like to address council on this item?
I don't think we have anything to add. I just would like to say, while I'm up here, that working on this project with the city and with Shannon and the staff of the planning department has been an excellent experience for all of us. And I just want to thank her and the rest of staff. I know from time to time, you may have heard me whine about a few things, but I can't whine on this one. This has been a great experience, so thank you. And we'll answer any questions you may have about the site.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just have a question about the math. So, the report says that the square footage doesn't change, but that the sign is going from 24 feet high to 22 feet high, but from 12 feet wide to 22 feet wide. That means 22 by 22 is not, that's not 200.
Well, we measure, so you can see here, we do what's called an eight-line box around the... So, the base is excluded-
Is not excluded.
...square footage, yes.
Okay.
It would be the same here, and so the dimensions would be a little bit different.
Okay, so the... But these numbers that you gave us do include the base?
No. The square footage, the 200 square feet would be this outline area in red.
Okay.
For the existing sign, it would have been something like that. And in both cases, we would exclude the base.
But so, am I wrong? If 20, I mean, 22 by 22 is not 200? So, is the report wrong, or am I just still not seeing the right thing? It's not important.
It's not to scale, and I don't have the dimensions, but it would probably be something more like 10, with, you know, 10 by 20.
So, what the report says is that the proposed change would reduce the height of the sign by two feet from 24 to 22 feet?
That's the overall height. So, the overall height is measured differently than the square footage. So, the overall height on the existing sign is 24 feet from the grade to the top of the sign.
Okay.
So, this comes down two feet. And then, the square footage is a box around the actual signage and tenant panels. And it's closer to 20 by 10.
Anybody else? Any other math issues? All right. Do I have a motion and... Oh, actually, I'm sorry. We're going to open this for public comment. Is there anyone wishing to comment on this item? I'm going to close the public comment, and now I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the signage plan amendment to increase the number of tenant panels from six to 10 on the primary multi-tenant development sign, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans, and that it provides clear and recognizable signage for a major regional shopping center.
Need a second?
Second.
I had a really quiet second first. Brian, just a second. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Mayor, I have a quick comment-
Yes.
-related to the item. You know, these guys went through the process and did everything they needed to do, but I feel like we really have been missing an opportunity. And I wonder, you know, since we have the supplemental developmental standards for large retail structures, and we're aware that in other cities, they have successfully either incentivized or regulated housing atop big-box retail, and we have repeatedly kind of missed this opportunity here to look at housing options atop the large retail. And I wonder if council would be interested in exploring policy options to further housing atop retail, perhaps via planning and economic development?
I would suggest that we add this to the list when we are doing the comprehensive plan-
Ah.
-and put that on the list for something to be considered, as opposed to individually look at it, since it's coming up, and we're working it.
That makes sense.
Shannon, will you report to Todd that we added one more thing to the-
He'll like that.
-comprehensive plan?
I just look at it, it's 135,000 square feet, it's 135,000 square foot units that we're now trying to get, so.
That's a good idea, and I've heard council interest in looking at our standards for parking garage construction and the ability to convert or add housing to those as well. So, I think this is, we catch the theme for council and make sure it gets addressed and get community comment on it as we go through the comp plan process.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have, Shannon, I'm going to say a couple of things before you jump up, but next we have a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance to expand the options for a home stay operation by allowing the use of an accessory dwelling unit for guest accommodations when the property owner or resident manager resides on the same property and clarification of the current residency requirements. And before we begin, let me just do a little bit of housekeeping. Normally, we don't run an item over an hour of public comment, and we may or may not be able to fit that in tonight, we'll see, and then council will determine whether we need to go longer. We also typically take a break at 7:00, so keep that in mind. We-
Mayor, note that there are two components of this. I don't know if you want to do a separate... One of them might have a lot more comments than the other part. The one is to add the ADU, and the other is the clarification as to the standards for residency and occupancy.
Right. Yes, that came out of the Board of Adjustment hearing? Yes, okay.
Clarification.
It was highlighted. Yeah, the need for it.
Highlighted, for clarification. So, I just wanted to let you know that there's two, and I don't want one to get lost in the shuffle.
Okay.
Whoa, the other.
We have three new council members since we last took up this topic, and we have been doing this topic for a long time. I don't remember how long it's been, but it's been a long time. Yeah. Right. So, as you can expect, with three new council members, for the first time addressing this issue, there's been a lot of emails and a lot of input and a lot of research and reading and study about this issue. Everyone's trying to be very thorough. So, to contextualize the comments tonight, before you speak, let me just say a few things. Number one, for those of you that were here last time, we, as a city council, cannot dictate what happens with the room tax. So, we had a lot of comments in the beginning of this process saying things like, "We'll do this with the room tax and do that with the room tax," that we can't do anything with the room tax. And we also can't do anything with sales tax. So, if we were to take any funds and do anything with it, it would come right out of that budget that you just saw there. So, that's number one. The other is that we have gotten a lot of feedback from folks, a lot of emails and communications. And so, those consist of generally in support or not in support, but also a lot of ideas about how to potentially shape the issue that we're looking at tonight. lot of ideas about how to potentially shape the issue that we're looking at tonight, which is the issue of whether or not accessory dwelling units should be allowed to be used as home stays. And included in those suggestions for ideas that are not currently in the proposal before us include, and I'm telling you this list so that you might give us a little feedback about your thoughts about those, capping the number of units that would be allowed throughout the city to be used as home stays for, that are ADUs currently, that are accessory dwelling units. Whether to allow newly constructed ADUs to be used as home stays, or just grandfather in the ones that exist already. And these are suggestions to, some of these are born out of ideas that other cities have already implemented. One, another suggestion is to make all accessory dwelling unit home stays a conditional use permit application, and you just saw an example tonight of the conditional use permit application process. Those come to council for consideration and approval or disapproval. So that would mean each one would come before council. Making the conditional use permit non-transferable, so no one could sell, sell their ADU to somebody else, and that person won't have to go through the process. Creating a task force to make recommendations to this council around these issues. We just created a fairly large task force to help make recommendations about the Haywood Street property, so, so just an idea. And I'm sure there are others that I'm not thinking of in terms of ideas that we have heard from folks that are worth considering. Oh, the other one is, instead of banning all new, newly constructed ADUs from this process, to have a cooling-off period of like five years or something, where you couldn't use your new ADU as a, as a home stay for a period of time, or something like that. So, so those are some ideas, maybe if you want to react to those when you get up and speak, or you carefully planned out your comments and you want to stick to those, that's fine too. But first, what we're going to do is hear from Shannon regarding the two issues. One is a little bit more administrative, sort of a housekeeping clarification item, and one is this policy issue. So take it away, Shannon, and then, then we will open it up.
Thank you again, Mayor, council members, members of the public. As the mayor has indicated, the amendment that is before you this evening is, it's a relatively straightforward and seeks to achieve essentially two things. The first is to expand the options for home stays to allow the use of an accessory dwelling unit for guest accommodations. This is addressed in section 714.3 of the ordinance that is attached to your staff report. The second is to clarify the existing residency requirement for a full-time permanent resident to be present and residing during the home stay period, and this is addressed in section 716.1 of the attached ordinance. So while the amendment only impacts two different sections and the language change is relatively modest, the thought behind the changes are fairly extensive and a little bit more complicated. If you've read the staff report, you know that the latest, this is the latest part of an ongoing discussion, it's actually been close to three years, in case, not that I'm counting, but it's been going on for a while, for regarding options for short-term renting in Asheville. And just to recap, for those individuals who are a little bit, maybe a little bit newer to this conversation, currently, when it comes to our residential areas, our residential neighborhoods, the only legal short-term renting option is to obtain a permit for what we call a home stay. The home stay permit allows for the short-term renting of up to two rooms in your home to guests or lodgers. The owner or resident manager must be a permanent and full-time resident of the property, and the space that the guests occupy is part of the, the main home, the principal dwelling. A more recent question has come up as to whether the home stay options could or should be expanded to allow the use of ADUs for guest accommodations, and as the ordinance has currently written, the standards for home stays would not allow the, the use of an ADU, whether attached or detached, it would not allow. So if the prevailing sentiment is to allow the use of ADUs, a wording amendment would be required. And that is what our city council instructed staff to do back in November of 2015. Various subcommittees of council did, however, ask for more information or data so that they could better understand a few different things. And just to summarize those items, first of all, there was a request to understand how the community feels about the issue in general. This is reflected in survey number one and the individual email responses that were included as attachments to your report. Secondly, how do other cities regulate ADUs and home stays or short-term rentals in general? And that information is reflected in survey number two, as an attachment to your report. And then lastly, what are ADU owners in Asheville currently using their units for? And that is reflected in survey number three. And then, so this leads me to the part of the presentation where I offer a little bit of a disclaimer. Other than the specific facts that were polled from the Housing Needs Assessment Report, the information that is shared is informational, it is not scientific, it has not been verified, it is limited in scope, survey samples may have been biased or imbalanced, survey results could include duplication, and our staff had to make some judgment calls on how to categorize some of the responses that we received. And there may be other deficiencies as well. Now, it's not to say that that information isn't helpful or valuable or useful, I just offer that to exercise, or to ask that folks exercise some caution in drawing very strong conclusions from the information. So as a result of this and other information that has been researched and polled, there were a number of primary considerations that could be used, that the staff identified that could be used to help determine a position on this issue, and I'd like to kind of run through some of those right now. First of all, having the property owner or the resident manager on the property appears to be the single most effective way to control nuisance issues. You may recall from some of the earlier public discussions that our staff reported that very few, if any, complaints have been identified and associated with an existing home stay, or when the property owner was on the property and there to kind of manage the activity. Now, how that could change if it is a detached structure that is not where the oversight may be diminished, remains to be seen and is the subject of some debate. Secondly, enforcement has been and continues to be challenging. Our staff, we do feel like we are making some progress in this area, but there do appear to be some practical constraints, resources being one of them. You saw earlier the, the request for the budget amendment to help on that front. Thirdly, and in consideration of that enforcement and that oversight, if nuisance issues can be addressed or largely addressed, then other goals for housing are held somewhat imbalanced for goals for economic opportunity. So how you prioritize one goal over another is something that is important for the community and our decision-makers to, to consider. Fourthly, home stay permits are issued annually, and so if there was a decision to move forward with the amendment, and there was concern, or there was some unintended consequences as a result of that, it would be possible to change the standards back and within a 12-month period regain compliance. So it is possible to do sort of a 12-month pilot, if that was of interest.
Are you just adding one more, one more to our?
Yeah, sorry. And then lastly, as the mayor mentioned, there have been a number of other options that have been considered that could help control or limit the activity or the impacts of using ADUs as part of a home stay operation. The mayor has already mentioned the overall cap, and I would just add that some consideration as to what determines that number needs to be, there, there needs to be some thought put into that, and that there should be some defensible rationale associated. Additionally, we would want to consider whether you want a citywide cap, or if we want to break it down by district, or census tract, or some other defined area. A separation requirement is another option. Now, this council specifically removed a separation requirement that had existed previously for home stays, but separation requirements have some good and bad points. The good points are, they inherently cap the number of permits, but they also effectively distribute the activity through an area. There are some unintended consequences, they can be used defensively to block applications, and, you know, it would also potentially exclude other property owners who might otherwise be eligible. The mayor also mentioned the limit on a number of days, she mentioned the cooling-off period. A lot of cities have attempted to limit the number of days within a calendar year, they would say, as an example, only 60 days in a year. We have learned from those cities' experiences that that is virtually impossible to monitor and enforce. So the idea, the concept of a cooling-off period has been introduced where, because we issue on an annual basis, we could enter into an active or a hot period where somebody has a home stay permit for a period of time, say for that one year, at the end of that, they would enter a cooling-off period. Another option would be, or another part of that would be to not allow new ADUs to be eligible, they would have to enter immediately into a cooling-off period. So hopefully, that would discourage the construction of ADUs for the sole purpose of short-term rentals. And, you know, depending on the considerations, you know, what the time period is, if it's one year on and two years off, or two years on and one year, you know, that is something that would need to be discussed. And that concludes my introduction, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or I'll be available for any other questions after the public hearing.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing, but are there any other housekeeping items before we do that?
Do we want to deal with the, one separate thing first, somehow?
Yeah.
Sure. You've got that in front of you. We need to, do we, I can open the public hearing on that very isolated one, and then we can handle that first, is that what you're suggesting?
My guess is that folks are here to speak to the other one, if I want to have us go straight to them, to the big one first.
All right, just having a quick debate about whether to get rid of the small item first, but we're not going to.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, we're going to, never mind. All right. So we will, at this time, open the public hearing. Comments must be limited to three minutes, you saw how that worked earlier, and if you want to yield your time and not speak on this item tonight to allow someone else to speak for up to 10 minutes, you can do that. It takes three, three folks, but again, if you yield your time, you wouldn't, you would be choosing not to speak on that, this issue.
So are they speaking on both, or just?
Can we have, can we just open it up for the whole thing at one time?
Yes.
Then they're speaking on both. Are you happy with that?
That, no, that's fine, just make sure that everybody knows if they've got anything about either one, either one of this amendment that they speak during their time for both.
So technically, two items are before you, before us, tonight. One is sort of technical in nature, it's a clarification, do you want to explain the clarification quickly?
Yes, basically, the home stay ordinance, or Shannon can do it, has always had two components to it. One is that you have to be a full-time resident of the property, and the second is that if you're a full-time resident during the time of the home stay occupation or time period, that you be present during that time overnight. So you have to live there, it has to be your full-time residence and house to which you return and go home to, and two, while you're, while the home stay is going on, you have to be present. So in other words, even if you live there full-time, you can't have the home stay when you're on vacation for two weeks. You've got, both of those things have to be together. There was some question that maybe that was not the clearest thing in the world, so the language has been shored up to make sure that anyone reading the ordinance could come to the conclusion and know that both of those components were required.
Okay. And that's a standard that we adopted the last time we voted on this, and apparently there was some debate about its interpretation when it was codified, so that, the, the one item is to clarify that intention. The other, of course, is the entire topic of whether or not accessory dwelling units, and do we have our, our handy little picture of an accessory dwelling unit? No. But it seems like everybody here, especially those wearing a sticker that says ADU, know what those are. So, so the other topic, of course, is the issue of whether to allow ADUs to be included in the definition of a home stay. So with that, ready, who would like to start? Okay, Mike? This is a professional council speaker, he's going to show us how it's done.
I'm not a professional, that's true, you know, I'm not. Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to ask Mr. Haynes if he's going to recuse himself from his vote. He was quoted in the Citizen Times last week that his son is considering building an ADU on his property, and it would seem to me that he has a conflict of interest in his vote.
If I was quoted as saying such, I was quoted wrong. My son is considering a home stay and not adding anything but a home stay.
Okay, thank you. The overarching issue here for me is that, what happens to residential neighborhoods? Most of us, I think that opposes, changed the ordinance, at least the one allowing home stays and ADUs, bought our homes thinking that we would reside in a residential neighborhood for a long time. We didn't consider that we might reside on Hotel Rose sometime. This turns the residential neighborhood definition on its head, and there were the ADU issue, or the SDR issue, the affordable housing issue was an issue during the campaign, and it seems like that by allowing ADUs to be used as short-term rentals, you're soaking up a possible use for affordable housing. And I ask you to vote against this amendment. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council members. In light of, oh, my name is Judy Geary, sorry. In light of the ADU home stays, some residents have expressed concern about keeping the character integrity and community focus in Asheville. I share these concerns, and I'd like to address it from a different perspective. Grandfathering to allow current ADU owners to participate in the home stay program will enable local citizens, such as teachers, artists, business owners, and entrepreneurs, to afford to live in Asheville. Many residents depend on this income to make ends meet and to pay their mortgages and taxes. Homeowners like these make up the culturally rich, diverse, and unique fabric of our town, and they're the reason why so many of us love living here. By barring current ADU owners from home stays, we risk driving out the very people that make the city what it is, and take away the opportunity for local residents to participate in the economic benefits of tourist revenue. It hands over control of tourist dollars to hotels, mostly chains, that send the revenue out of the city and out of the state instead of investing it locally. And it shuts the door on many visitors who can either cannot afford to pay the high hotel price, the high hotel rates, or prefer to stay in home-stay-like settings where they can interact with locals and get a feel for the real Asheville. By allowing current owners of ADUs to be grandfathered into the home stay program, we create a win-win situation for Asheville for the following reasons. It enables local residents who count on the income from ADU home stays to remain in their homes. It channels a portion of the tourist revenue to local citizens who invest it locally and use it to maintain and improve their properties. It limits the number of ADU home stays. It provides alternatives for visitors who cannot afford to stay in our expensive hotels, enabling them to visit and spend money in local attractions, residents, and businesses. It helps preserve the character, integrity, and community focus of Asheville by making it possible for local residents, such as teachers, artists, small business owners, and entrepreneurs, to afford to live here. I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity to speak today, and I urge the council to consider this compromise when making their decision. This solution is simple, fair, and can be enacted quickly to bring immediate relief to struggling homeowners. I think it's a solution we can all live with. Thank you very much for your time.
Mayor, council members, thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Casey Campfield, I'm a local business owner and local homeowner. I'm here today to speak out against the expansion of short-term rentals, and I beg you to strenuously enforce the existing ban on single-unit and to beg you to strenuously enforce the existing ban on single-unit and whole-home short-term rentals. My rationale is simple. There's a huge housing crisis in our city. Not enough units are available, and the units that are available are among the most expensive in the entire state. Thousands of hard-working people who make this city run can no longer afford to live here. So how at a time like this can we even be discussing providing more lodgings for tourists when our own citizens can't find homes? And for what? To further enrich a dubious West Coast corporation valued at billions of dollars? To further enrich property investors who are snatching up swaths of real estate in order to cash in on the short-term rental phenomenon? Some homeowners may say they want to supplement their income this way. Well, they already have a legal option available to them, renting out a room at a reasonable rate to a local person. This is what I did in my home, and it has worked out nicely for everyone involved. There's certainly no shortage of good people looking for a place to live. Council members, this is pretty cut and dry. Your vote today will either be in favor of the nation's financial elite or in support of Asheville's working class. And this choice will be remembered the next time we go to the polls for local elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Next? Yes, back there? Yes.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Chuck Freeman. Let me frame my comments by saying I'm a retired Air Force colonel that used to fly fighters. So watch out for my language. I'm also a retired corporate vice president of a Fortune 500 company. And I'd like to speak violently in opposition to this proposal. Why? I bought a house in Asheville in a very nice neighborhood, which incidentally is across the street from your mother.
Who's mother? My mother?
Yours. It's a very nice neighborhood. I bought it in the assurance of the zoning that made it a residential area that would protect my property values. The house had been abandoned for 17 years, and I put twice as much money into rehabbing it as I did to buy it. I did that with assurance that the rule of law guaranteed that my house would be safe. Now it's being considered for a commercial area. You know, the phrase "guest accommodation" tells me this is a commercial enterprise that's now being allowed. This is an in-run on zoning. We either have residential or we don't. The arguments that have been made is we have a housing shortage, but as someone else said, this housing is not for people that live in Asheville. It's for people that visit Asheville. The argument has been made that it allows people who already own houses to keep their houses. I would venture that this is a solution looking for the wrong problem. The problem is lack of jobs in the Asheville area that pay people enough money so that they can afford the housing in Asheville. The reason we need to keep the character of our communities is because that is the strongest selling point that Asheville has. It's in an area that has been chronically economically depressed because of transportation problems and lack of natural resources other than the sheer beauty of this place and the ambiance of Asheville and North Carolina. If you want to screw that up, go ahead and say yes to this proposal. I would counsel you to say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your language was very good.
Yes, in the back.
Mayor, council, I'm Lisa Thompson, president of Hall Creek Community Association. In the past, accessory dwelling units have been promoted as affordable housing solutions for Asheville citizens, not the casual tourist who have thousands of hotel rooms available and more being built. Tourist needs are being met. Asheville has a serious housing crisis. ADUs are an option for low and middle-income housing. Asheville residents should come first. Those needing affordable housing should come first. We are taxpayers. We pay your salary. Please put Asheville and its citizens above tourists. Hall Creek implores you to vote against this change. By doing so, council will preserve the character of residential neighborhoods and acknowledge the needs of middle and low-income residents for affordable housing. Do not vote yes only because you may have a feeling, member, or friend, who would like to utilize a property for short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara, I think you were next. Oh, Dave, did you want to? No.
Hi, I'm Margaret Melton. Thank you for listening to me one more time, Mayor, and members of City Council. But you already know where the Coalition of Asheville Neighborhoods stands. We are against this change. I also sit on the Affordable Housing Committee. And we have a group of dedicated volunteers who have spent four years so far trying to come up with solutions for affordable housing, and folks, you're fixing to stab us in the back. This should not be passed. We have a housing crisis. We've got high rental rates. We need to help the people that live here. And frankly, this targets, with a great big old bull's eye, the older neighborhoods who do not have the covenants to keep this from occurring. So the older neighborhoods where a lot of us live, and I'm a native here, been here many, many years, are being targeted, and we have no other recourse but City Council. We want to help to solve the affordable housing problem, but it's also causing a problem with economic development because when the companies come in here and look, they're saying, "Where are my entry-level people going to live? Where are my middle folks gonna live?" And there's no place for them to rent by. They have to go to Marion, Old Ford, Canton, and Haywood County. I'm sure they appreciate Asheville helping them out, but do we really want to do that? And so I implore you, as a member of the Affordable Housing Committee who came out fully against this, to please, please, let's work on the affordable housing. Let's not help the tourists. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Delange, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I operate a city-approved home stay, and I do want to express extreme gratitude to Shannon Morgan, who was very communicative, extremely helpful. And I appreciate having somebody that's highly interested in this community there to answer my questions and help me. I'm a public school teacher, and two years ago, I started to face a dilemma of being able to afford to remain in Asheville. I remain a teacher in this community, which matters greatly to me. Been a teacher for 23 years, and 14 of those have been in the Asheville area. I have a home that I decided to divide and offer to guests as a way to keep my son and myself here. And this has worked brilliantly. This has actually kept me here in a job that I care about and has enabled my son to have stability. I have my permit. I was able to quickly meet the, you know, what was required to be able to operate as a home stay. And I felt strongly about coming tonight to speak because I did experience a couple of months of strange feeling like I was a criminal or slinking around almost in my mind, like, oh, my gosh, I'm this horrible person. I've been cited, and I, you know, I need to bring myself into line with the city regulations. Which, by the way, I'm that strange person who was not aware that I was actually doing something wrong. I'm giving people a really quality experience with our community, and I feel really proud of that. And, and I was cited in October, and I swiftly wrote to Mr. Morgan and said, "What do I need to do?", and he was, he was great. So I'm here. I have a permit, so I'm, I'm good. But I wanted to come and talk because I have several friends who have, you know, my apartment is a basement apartment. And so I was able to meet the city's expectations. I do have friends that have exterior structures, who are fantastic people, who are finding themselves feeling like criminals. And I just wanted to speak on behalf of the people that are really trying to be here, committed to this community, and offer something of value, artists, you know, firemen, teachers. It's hard to live here and give to this community. I guess that's my time, but I want to say there are a lot of people that have these exterior structures that may not be able to remain if they cannot do this. Thank you.
Yes, in the back.
I would note that you're far from alone in not knowing about the rules. Before this all blew up last year, I had no idea about the illegality of the short-term rentals at all.
Hello, I'm David Rogers. Thank you for letting me speak with you tonight. I know you're concerned about affordable housing and just housing that normal folks can afford to buy. And I'm sure you're gonna hear a lot of opinions tonight, but I just want to stick with some facts. Number one, using ADUs as hotels will drive real estate prices higher. Jeremy Goldstein, the chairman of P&amp;Z, a commercial real estate broker, explained at the last P&amp;Z meeting how an STR thrown off $30,000 to $40,000 a year would be valued at $400,000 to $500,000. This is in addition to the value of the primary residence. When people factor this into their purchase equation, they will pay more for homes that have an ADU running an STR or that have the potential to do so. Folks wanting to buy a home just to live in will be competing against those who plan to run a business operation. Number two, STRs are commercial operations and need to be kept out of neighborhood residential. This isn't an opinion. This is a point made by staff in their staff report on the 11-way side rezoning for an STR. Here's what staff said under compliance with the comprehensive plan. Short-term vacation rentals have not been supported as a compatible use in single-family residential neighborhoods due to the commercial transient activity that occurs on these properties. Furthermore, the plan describes a need for affordable housing as the number-one economic development problem for the community. While this property may or may not meet the affordability standards, the home is a modest home in a city where rental housing is in scarce supply. Staff spoke quite clearly and made many other points about how STRs are against the stated goals of our city. Number three, profits can be made under the current ordinance. Rental rates are up 7.6% in the last 12 months, as cited in the ACT recently. If people really need to make income from their ADU, isn't the profit margin on long-term rentals enough? People can rent rooms in their homes to tourists under the home stay rules. Kicking long-term tenants out of ADUs for more profitable tourists undermines our efforts to create more housing and is against our stated goals. Number four, this is real housing. We supersized our ADUs last summer. Some of you weren't here for that, but we supersized them. They can be 800 square feet or 1,000 attached. Staff asked at a CAND meeting a few months ago, "How many of us, how many of us have ever lived in an 800-square-foot house or an apartment?" A lot of us raised our hands. This is real housing we're talking about. Who benefits? In a recent Wall Street Journal article that was sent to you, it was said that the upper 20% make the most money from this. Whose side are you on here? Are you for the upper 20% who can get financing to build these things? Or the people who can buy these and run them as hotels? Or are you for the people who need a place to live? That's the real decision. That's what you're deciding tonight. We need housing. We pumped tens of millions of dollars into creating more housing. You can't just take this housing away.
Thank you. Yes. Sorry. Oh, sorry. I wasn't sure. That's fine. I did say someone would be asked.
Hi, my name's Will Hornaday, and I'm opposed to expansion of the ADUs to include home stays. I feel the city's punted their responsibility and promises to increase affordable housing. And the increase in scale for ADUs last summer, and now by opening ADUs to home stays, will make it cost prohibitive for homeowners to opt to use ADUs for long-term rentals. The impact on the neighborhood isn't known. So what, but what is known, that cities where companies like Airbnb operate, when you were doing your research for this, I'm sure you found that every city that runs into home stays, it has problems with neighborhoods, and there's a lot of pushback. We're a desirable city, and people want to be here, but we don't have to go on every date. We can respect our neighborhoods, and I hope that you do not amend the ordinance. Thank you.
Yes. I didn't want to say. Maggie, is there a way to turn this, does this light just stay on like that, or is it just? It's shining this direction. It's not.
The overhead light?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you so much. That's really helpful.
I'm sorry. I couldn't sort of see it over there.
Hi.
Oh, wait, now the audience. Is there a way to just shut it off? Wait, hold on. We don't need our guest speaker to try to shut this off.
We need an expert here.
There we go. I like the ambiance.
We're good.
Thank you.
My name's Rebecca Robertson. I have been an artist for 20 years. I'm a beekeeper. I've lived in Asheville for 17 years. I'm not the financial elite. I'm an artist, and I have an ADU, which was shut down in October. I contribute and participate in my community, and I always have. My ADU is located next to a 100-unit apartment building and across from the Brooks Howe Retirement Center. So it's a very mixed neighborhood. When I bought the house, it literally was a tear-down, and my neighbors set up fireworks when I turned that horrible-looking house into the artistic beauty that it is now. I'm not just serving tourists. I've had three different movie production people stay in my house. I've had many people that want to move to Asheville, and they're living with me temporarily while they're looking for their permanent homes. I've had people working on short-time jobs. I've had doctor residents staying at Mission. So it isn't just the tourists that I'm serving. I think I'm providing a valuable service there. I've never had a neighborhood, neighbor complaint. I was caught in that anonymous 40-person letter, and I got shut down as a result of that. I am absolutely positive that it was not my neighbors that turned me in. I'm positive of that. My name, when I bought the property, I bought it with the understanding that ADUs were allowed. My Realtor assured me of that. I didn't check with the city, but it was my understanding that it was okay. And I went forward with making a huge investment based on that. And the money that I'm generating from my ADU allows me to stay in Asheville. We all know that Asheville has limited job opportunities. And I deliberately made a plan based on the information that I had that it was okay for me to operate an ADU when I made the decision to do it. And now that I've been shut down, I can tell you, it has hit me really hard in the pocketbook, and I'm juggling things around to kind of figure out, how do I make it all work? So I am, I am a local artist. I'm not the financial elite. I contribute to Asheville. I'm a good member of the community. I voted for many of you. And I'm asking you to please consider approving the ADUs on the home stay ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, you'll be up.
Mayor and council, my name is Helen Powell-Busch, and I live in the Five Points neighborhood. My husband and I- My husband and I bought our two-bedroom house back in 2000, when it was affordable for people like us to do so. I work for a nonprofit organization, and my husband works in the service industry for one of the many, many companies who don't pay a living wage. We've renovated our home by ourselves slowly, and as we've been able to afford it. Our house is surrounded by small businesses. Two B&Bs, a body shop, a tow truck garage, a restaurant supply company, a ballet studio, and a restaurant. There are also several short-term rentals, and none of the above have lowered our home value or made our block any less safe or livable. We love our neighborhood, visitors, neighbors, and the proximity to downtown. My husband and I have been building a garage apartment, a garage or the apartment above it, for over a year now, before the size limit increase was allowed. We've been building it by hand. That's why it's taking so long. The best use for us, for our family, is to use it for visiting family and friends, occasional weekend and week-long visitors. And my parents are turning 80 this year and sick, and may need a place to live with a very short notice. Please understand that putting the burden of solving the affordable housing shortage on families like mine and denying us rental income hurts our ability to prosper in Asheville. We feel that this discriminates us by not allowing us to use our building in the way that it works best for our family. I have several neighbors and friends that have been managing short-term rentals for years. They're artists, musicians, parents of young children, and they've been able to supplement their income, and other neighbors have been able to supplement their income through cleaning and managing their properties. Many of us voted for new council based on this issue because it has the most direct impact on our lives. Hotels should not be the only businesses that profit from our booming tourist industry, and local property owners should have the opportunity as well. Please consider the task force idea and vote for adding ADUs to the home stay.
Maggie, can you reset that timer?
Yes.
Oh, you decide. He can see.
Thanks very much for letting me speak. I know you're hearing a lot of opinions, and you've gotten mine via email. And I've been thinking about this a lot today. So...
Will you state your name?
Oh, I'm Billy Loughland. I am asking you to defer a decision regarding changing the UDO for the use of ADUs until after the comprehensive plan process is completed. Developing and adopting a new comprehensive plan is a major undertaking. Already, the city has had meetings to help residents provide their vision of what they want their neighborhood and community to look like in 10, 20, 30 years from now. The city is also investing significant taxpayer funds and staff time in this project. The planning department has assured residents that UDOs will be modified to comply with the final comprehensive plan. With this in mind, it seems the best course for the city council to take at this time is to defer any decision about modifying current UDOs. This is a big decision, which will change the way our community looks and functions. For city council to make a decision now on changing the UDO concerning ADUs is to negate the very process of developing a new comprehensive plan. I think the task force idea is a great idea that will tie in with the comprehensive plan, and I think maybe we'll get some ideas. The mayor mentioned some variations on the theme. So that's my hope, is that it will be deferred. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm John Farquhar. I think this is about the seventh presentation that I've made on this topic. I'm 0 for 6, so give me a break here. I think I've made just about every factual and conceptual argument that I could make that ADUs are not disruptive, that they don't materially affect the total housing supply, and that our citizens are not rapacious types who are going to build ADUs on every single backyard if this thing is made legal. So let me suggest a couple of alternatives here. First of all, to meet the needs of current ADU owners and add to the supply of long-term rental units, let's compromise. Grandfather the existing pool of ADUs. Permit new ADU buildings with the proviso that they not rent short-term for a period of three to five years. If new study or new language is required, suspend enforcement until final recommendations are approved. Too many ADU owners have, for too long, been in a moral and financial bind. The second option, if you don't want to go forward at this point, is to step back and consider ADUs coolly and objectively. Broaden the analysis to include the kind of creative compromises recently circulated, such as a moratorium, capping, cooling-off periods, and the like. Convene a task force, but with these provisions. First of all, include all stakeholders. Secondly, have it chaired by an individual who is provably not committed one way or the other. Thirdly, time-box the study, two to three months, and make it a very intense exercise. We've been at this entirely too long, and people are having a lot of problems because of that. Fourth, I don't think you're going to like this, agree that recommendations will be binding on the council. You've had two years, and you really haven't gotten to a conclusion. I think that's probably not approachable, but maybe some sort of arbitration approach would work to really make something have teeth that was recommended to the council. And lastly, suspend enforcement until recommendations are approved. Too many ADU owners have, for so long, been in the same moral and financial situation that I described. Thank you.
Let's see your yielders. Okay. Oh. All right. I think after Brandy, we'll take a break. Good, good.
Hi, I'm Brandy Boggs, and I appreciate your time. This is a simple PowerPoint presentation I just kind of put together a couple hours before I came, but it's based on research that I've been doing for a lot of years. A lot of us have been doing this for a lot of years. I want to stay for the record, I have a home stay. I have nothing to gain here, other than the fact that this process has been so flawed and disappointing that it has just bothered me. I don't sleep at night. Like, there is paranoia. We are considered the bad guys. We've been, had fingers pointed at us, even though most of the studies, all the studies show, we're not the ones to blame for this housing dilemma that we have in Asheville. So I just thought, since y'all are looking to... Well, first of all, I want to back up and say, I'm a federal employee, and without my home stay, my income is under the poverty line. So I do this as a means, not because I want to do it exactly, but because it's what I have to do. After chasing grants for years and trying to find, like, work in Asheville that pays the bills, this is what I turned to four years ago, and I'm super thankful and blessed, like many of us, from this. So y'all are talking about $106,000 to enforcement, and again, let's have a task force, not extra enforcement. Everything that was stated today as these new ideas and new concepts, I have personally stated multiple times at multiple committees over the years. I know many other folks have as well. And we have many tools in our toolbox that we are not using. It's a shame. We have a new plan, aim, which I'm excited and proud to be a part of, but it's another plan. We have plans already that are not being used. So as quoted by a planning and zoning member, leaving out ADUs as an option for home stays is plain hairs. We keep hearing, we need more data. We need more data. Well, we have data. We have the Bowen Report. We have Dr. Mai Tai Noguian's report. Both of these folks are leading experts in their field, and both of these folks have discussed short-term rentals in Asheville specifically. This is a case study done by Bowen Report, and if you read on there, it's a lot of words. I know it's a lot of words, but basically, the bottom part, "Majority of stakeholders indicated there is some activity of converting houses to vacation rentals, but these are typically not homes or housing units that would be considered affordable to most low-income households." Again, "Market demand for traditional long-term rentals, yada, 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 not on scale, it is greatly impacting their markets." We have data showing that these vacation rentals are not greatly impacting the markets. These are conclusions. This is not some random excerpt. This is the conclusion from the Bowen Report. Why we're not using it, I don't know. Another consideration from this, actually, from this Bowen Report that I want to make note is, 2/3 in 2010 and 2015, 2/3 of all owner, homeowners, live alone or with one other person because they choose to do so. The same is projected for 2020. These are not folks that are going to run out and do a home stay. They live alone because they want to. It's important. We have all this hype around the fact that everyone's going to run out and do it.
Will you push it up a little bit?
What's that? Sorry, that was when I was just beginning. Again, again, what we see here is, the home stays likely have a limited ability to meet the needs of most area renters. It talks about conventional apartments and private, non-conventional rentals, and what we're looking at is, what are home stays in Asheville? This is by the Bowen Report that y'all commissioned that was, I don't know, tens of thousands of dollars. I know the next report was $10,000. The conclusions say, these don't have the ability to meet the needs of area renters. We have all the data that we need. So here we go to Dr. Noguian's report. The city listed three main issues. They wanted Noguian to, Dr. Noguian, who's a UNC Chapel Hill professor and leading expert. Three reasons the city cited to look into this short-term rental. This is like, short-term rentals. This is beyond home stay. Full-blown, worst-case scenario, short-term rentals. Reduce the negative impact on residential neighborhoods. Leveling the playing field between short-term rentals, hotels, and bed and breakfasts. Number three, minimizing the effects of short-term rentals on affordable housing. So there, it's clearly stated that these are the three things folks are looking for. I don't know if you can tell the color differentiation here, but basically, the number-one concern, or of the three, one of the concerns was to reduce the impact on residential neighborhoods. There was four recommendations. So far, the city has incorporated two of these recommendations. Thus, charging registration permit and enforcement, stepping up enforcement of existing regulations. Number two is to level the playing field between hotels and bed and breakfasts. Ironically, the city has enforced all four recommendations to protect hotels and bed and breakfasts. The main concern always cited, affordable housing. Unfortunately, I kind of actually messed up, but gave the city a little bit here. Of the three recommendations to protect affordable housing, none of them have actually been followed. The one that kind of has, that I broke away here, is to heavily discourage conversion of long-term rentals, or owner-occupied, into short-term rentals. So the city, the main concern that a lot of folks say is affordable housing, has done none of the recommendations. Hotels, they've done all of them. City integrity, they've done half. Y'all, they, whoever, staff. You want more data? Here's Rosen Consulting. This is pulled out of Noguian's report. Also, it talks about the impact of Airbnb and other online marketplaces on trends in urban housing markets are minimal. This is from Noguian's report. This is the only thing that she could really find discussing this in all of her research. Another report from Noguian, Shareable Economy is Law Center, another excerpt. I'm going to read this one. "STRs can build community wealth by supplementing local residents' income rather than supporting large-chain hotels. They also argue that cities where housing is becoming more expensive, the option for homeowners to operate as an STR can help people stay in their homes rather than be squeezed out by market forces already in action. Furthermore, if homeowners lose their job or have seasonal unemployment, like we often do here, that may wage, wages fluctuate. The ability to rent a room in their home can help with mortgage payments and keep them in their homes. Home stays do allow this, but only if you have the type of home stay that fits under the same roof with the same exact things. Not everyone has this opportunity. Some folks, all they have is an ADU." The best data we have to date, I believe, was participated by the city of Asheville and Dr. Noguian's report, and it shows the average number of total, and this is 80, I mean, this is short-term rentals. So this is home stays, this is everything that's been going on. This was done summer of 2014, in the height of tourist season, before schools started back. Airbnb was a total of 320. VRBO and HomeAway, if you add those up, equal 321. Most folks list on Airbnb and one other site. That was cited in the report. Other notable things from that earlier table that I just showed you. Airbnb only shows properties for rent by the owner. Indicates a large number of non-professional properties for rent, suggesting Airbnb rentals may be a source of income for Asheville residents. It goes on to say the part I just said about cross-listing, and that it was at a peak tourist time. So this myth that everyone says everyone's going to run out and have a home stay in their ADU, everybody's going to run out and do this, I just want to tell y'all, as someone who's done this for four years, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. At minimum, you're looking at maybe 15 hours a week. It takes up a lot of resources to get started. You have to figure that part out. But more so than anything, you're on call 24/7. 24/7. I have not had a Christmas yet that I didn't have somebody calling me if I'm going to rent or some major holiday. Now you have to be there, so you can't actually rent on those times when people might want to rent. There's a lot of things here that people don't consider. When you're talking 24/7 on-call, you're not really getting paid a lot. There's been a lot of research that shows that the average of these come in is like $12,000 a year to be on-call 24/7. So I would just like to say, as I've said many times before, let's please have a task force. Let's have all stakeholders involved. Let's have everyone sit down. Let's get real data. Let's not use hype. Let's not, let's use the tools in our toolbox, please.
Okay, as promised, I think we're going to take our break, but raise your hand if you plan on speaking tonight, so we can get an idea of what we got loaded here. So, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I'm just going to say about 10 more folks. Okay. We will return around, how about quarter till? Is that sufficient?
Is there a close session?
We don't have a close session, so...
That would be great.
Okay, so 7:45, we will return.
Horace's brain.
Yeah. Horace's brain.
Real experience, whatever the outcome is. Just a signal.
Okay, are we, we're... Okay, are we, we're missing our attorney, but that's all right.
That's okay.
We have some other attorneys here. So we'll continue. All right, looks like there were about 10 people, so let's begin. All right, let's just, in the back, yes. That mic was not made for someone as small as you.
Hi, my name's Mark Essick. I live about a mile north of downtown, just off Merriman and Claxton Elementary. The street I live on is mixed. It's probably about two-thirds single-family, about one-third older homes that are broken up into apartments. I like the mix. I like the, my neighbors who have been living there for a decade or more the way I have. And I like the mostly younger people who live in the apartments for a year or more at a time. Next door to me is a building with five units in it. Do the residents there have parties? Yes, they have parties. Do they keep me awake at night? Yes, they keep me awake at night. But I close my windows and I chalk it up to urban living. If it happens at the same apartment repeatedly, I go over and I have a conversation with them. I've never had to have that conversation with the same tenant more than once. We respect each other, we like each other, we know what it is to be neighbors. Good neighbors make good neighborhoods, and good neighborhoods make good cities. Short-term renters do not make good neighbors. I've learned that over the past year. My neighbor across the street, first illegally and then she got permitted, has been operating a homestay. I liked the neighbor and I thought I'd give it a chance. What did I find? I found that it makes life worse for me and my neighbors. First, parking became a problem. The neighborhood is fairly dense. There's a lot of pressure on-street parking. Most of us do not have driveways. When you added short-term renters into the mix, they took away spots that long-term residents needed. Second, it got noisier. I had to go across the street repeatedly to ask people to be quiet late at night. When I, when I talked to a long-term neighbors about noise, I knew I wouldn't have to go back for a year or more until they moved out and somebody else moved in. With the short-term renters, it was new people several times a week. I also own an ADU. It's a garage apartment in my backyard. It does not place me in a moral or a financial bind. I think I could make more money renting it out short-term than I do in my profession. I'm a rider. But I'm not going to do that. Why won't I do that? Because I make pretty good money renting it out long-term. I have two new renters. They're two young women. They just moved from Johnson City. They're playing in a band. They're working in restaurants. They're the kind of people who make this city strong. People on vacation stay up late at night. They drink and talk and laugh. Those are good things. That's what I do on vacation. But when you go on vacation, you shouldn't be taking money away from permanent residents.
Hello, thank you for allowing us to discuss this this evening. My name is Janet Hart. I live on Beard Street in the Charlotte Street neighborhood. We're an older historic neighborhood, and we're particularly at risk for short-term rentals due to our proximity to downtown. We do have one STR that is operating illegally in our neighborhood. In the beginning, a couple of years ago, I was kind of on the fence about this because when I go on vacation, I have used Verbo. Once in Salzburg, Austria, which is a little different animal there, and also in Washington, DC, which they have lots of regulations around their properties. But over the last year, I'm convinced now that US Council needs to put our city residential housing needs first. It makes no sense to allow tourists to use our valuable housing when we are faced with this huge deficit. It comes down to a few homeowners being benefited when our community is put at a disadvantage, both in safety and a sense of community. My question for the ADU owners who want to make $12,000 a year on their units, why not charge $1,000 a month and make the same amount of money and allow a long-term resident to live there? Or better yet, charge them $900 a month and forget about being 24/7 on-call all the time? I know it's not going to put a huge dent in our housing crisis, but it's not going to make it worse. Thank you.
Mayor and council members, thank you. My name is Grace Curry, and I'm a resident of Asheville in an older neighborhood. And I have sent you all emails that some of you may had an opportunity to read. And they outline why I urge you to oppose this proposal at this time and wait to deliberate taking action. And of course, one of the main reasons was the housing market right now in Asheville. I would like to add to my comments, the second point I made in my email. And that was about impacts from recent, recent changes in your, the homestay and ADU ordinances. In a short time, less than a year ago, council has made some significant changes in residential zoning regulations. And as you know, these regulations have expanded commercial uses as being allowable, and also their regulations allowing for greater density. I, as a resident, am concerned about, hey, what's next? What's next for neighborhoods? Will the trend for more commercialization continue? And how will that affect decisions of people looking for neighborhoods for their families? Will they be looking at, looking elsewhere or looking at communities that have covenances? And my, my thinking is if, if council has an interest in keeping some semblance of traditional neighborhood flavor in residential districts, I hope that you will look at the impacts of these recent changes, these changes that have just happened less than a year ago, before you undertake further changes, which would open up more commercialization uses in residential districts. So in conclusion, I urge you to wait and see, and wait and see, and at this time, vote against the proposal to expand home stays. And I do want to remind you that the discussion around ADUs as short-term rentals is not, has not been for long. It's been maybe five or six months ago that you asked the staff to look into that. But some people have implied that it's been going on and on and on. And I believe, anyway, so that's.
If you want to hand the comments, we'll read them, but you don't have to.
Well, these are the same you emailed to us, right?
Just with that additional expansion of, yeah, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Jackson Tierney. I live in Monford. Just a quick thumbnail sketch of my situation. We have an ADU. We purchased a house. It was actually an illegal space over our garage that was being rented for long-term. But we had the city over and they found out that it was not appropriate for sleeping because it connected to our garage where they could get carbon monoxide. So anyway, we spent about $15,000 to get it upgraded. We use it mostly for friends and family, but we'd like to rent it out for short-term rental as possible. The neighborhood we live in, when we walk to Nine Mile, we pass half a dozen bed and breakfasts. Our next-door neighbor is a stop on the Lagoon Tours, so three times a day, we get to enjoy the laughter and the drinking and the camaraderie. And then we also have two Segway Tours a day that go by our house. It puts a smile on my face. This is a tourist town. I love it. I just wanted to point out that there is some things that are going on with regards to the impact of the current homestay rules. I know the council wants to encourage new ADUs to increase the long-term housing market, but did you know that the existing stock of ADUs is actually going down? Because ADUs are currently excluded from homestay rules, ADU owners are deactivating their utility electric meter and connecting to the main house, removing the stove so it is no longer a self-sustaining unit, connecting the space by a doorway to the main house, and deactivating the separate house number for the ADU. These changes then allow the ADU owner to participate in the existing homestay program. I've spoken with many ADU owners, and if the homestay rules do not change to include the existing ADUs, they too will commence structural changes to their homes and essentially give back their ADU status in order to qualify for homestay permit and eliminate yet more housing units. So while the city relaxed its ADU construction rules last fall to encourage more of them, there is a real and growing threat that will negate gains that might have been achieved. Once these ADUs are deactivated, Asheville will likely never get them back into the rental pool, but it does not need to be this way. I believe we are smart enough and creative enough to find a path forward. Now, with regards to the list that the mayor had mentioned on the way in, I think it's a great list. You know, there's an expression that says, "There's a pony in that pile." I think there is. My personal preferences, and you've heard it from others, grandfather existing ADUs, ban home stays for new ADUs built under the new and relaxed standard, potentially implement a cooling-off period. And the task force. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Not that I'm counting, but that's five for the task force.
Good, good evening. Getting late in the evening, actually. My name is Andrew Fletcher, and I'm a renter. I've lived in Asheville for 10 years, or the last 20 years. Rented three locations. Been in the house, have lived in the house for eight years straight. So I'm a good renter. And I'm proud of that. And if I could buy a house, I would. But I can't. I work really hard, and I can't buy a house. And I notice, and I look at boards like this, you know, city council and boards and commissions, that the demographic of renters, which is now about 50% or more of the population, is not very well represented on these, on boards and commissions and city council. So you're going to have to trust some other people for how this is going to affect them. 8.8% of the respondents on the open city hall were renters. So I ask you politely to throw away that information because it does not represent our city. It represents, represents a handful of people with extremely vested interests. I'd also like to make a note about the word "homestay." It's very, it's not unusual for a legalese term to obfuscate the meaning of a word, but it is unusual when it's warmer and fuzzier than the real meaning of the word. Homestay sounds really nice. Micro-hotel, I think, is a much better, is a much better term. And so all these green stickers that you see out there that say "home stays," I look at them and I say, "That's a, that's a micro-hotel. It's a micro-hotelier." And this is one of the few times that I think that the hoteliers and the low-income and renting population might actually be on the same side of a, of an issue here. I think it's really, really unusual. I personally would rather see five, a 500-room hotel go up than see 500 units that I might, that me and my friends in the low-income bracket might be able to rent be added. It's a zero-sum game, though. When you take a house out of the rental market, the long-term rental market, and you give it to a short-term rental market, that is one more Ashevillean that can't find a place to live. Because we know with 0.9%, 0.9% vacancy rate, that's what they call structural vacancy rate. That is only houses that are just looking for people to rent to. The people are there, it's just a short amount of time before they get filled. But this is a zero-sum game. One more that goes, one more ADU that goes to short-term rental is one more Ashevillean that is, that we don't have. One community member that we don't get, one more, you know, neighbor that we don't get to interact with. And it's also one more house that's dedicated to people who attack our infrastructure rather than contribute to our community. With the affordable housing talk that was mentioned, that's mentioned in bar rooms and in rooms like this, and in people's workplaces, this is something that is directly affects people's lives because it affects where people live, where they rest their head. So please take a pause before you take another unit away from an Ashevillean that wants to live somewhere.
Thank you. Yes. So you're yielding your time? Okay. That didn't go well earlier, but I.
All right, so I get a whole time?
Yeah.
My name is Jonathan Wayne Scott. I was born at Fort Bragg, North Carolina. Served in the infancy, so please pardon my language. There are so many issues around this, it's impossible to even pick a place to start. First, I would like to make a very important clarification to a lot of people in the room who think that a long-term tenant is the same as a short-term guest. From a legal standpoint, it's vastly different. If you have a guest in your house and they're doing something that you don't want them to do, maybe they're talking too loud and they're whining about New Belgium, you can ask them to leave and they have to go. If you have a tenant, they can do whatever they want to within legal limits, and they have a tremendous amount of rights, and removing them from your property is a whole other ballgame. So bad tenants who occupy long-term rentals in neighborhoods can be bad for the neighborhood. There's a big difference between being a landlord and a person who is living with somebody. If you have a roommate, that is different than having a tenant. And here's how that's different. If you live with somebody, you are then eligible for being a domestic violence person. Sorry. Let me back up. I rented my rooms out to some veterans last summer, and because I lived in the house with them, a 350-pound former special ops commando managed to get a domestic violence protection order on me, which thereby kicked me out of my house, made me homeless. It made me jobless because my home was where I had my business. It took 60 days to evict a person who was on a month-to-month lease. My neighbors were terrorized by this person who was actually creating bamboo structures around the house to protect himself. At the time that I engaged in this, I had a family crisis in which my house, which was filled with five people, went down to just me. And the potential for Airbnb giving me the flexibility to weather that family crisis was what I was looking at. But my life became so chaotic, I went for the more steady, long-term rental that was processed by Homeward Bound. I had, you know, Homeward Bound come and inspect my house for these people. I had case managers. It took me forever to get these people out of my house. They had me arrested three times. I spent 34 days in jail because of the charges that were against me. All of them were dismissed. Last time I was in front of this camera, I was in the back of a police car because my tenant said that I had swung a knife at him in his house. A 350-pound former special ops commando and another combat veteran, me at a buck fifty, somehow managed to swing a knife at these guys, not leave a mark on them, and I was arrested. When I went to Homeward Bound to retrieve leases to evict them the way that I had to get rid of these people, to go forth with the process of eviction, I had a power of attorney go to Homeward Bound to give me the leases. They refused to give my power of attorney lease. Thereby, I went to Homeward Bound to get them, and guess what happened? Because I went there, I was violated on my domestic violence protection order that was taken out against me by my tenant. And then I was put in jail again and held on a $150,000 bond. So to anybody who is complaining about parking, and anybody who's complaining about a loud party in the neighborhood, and anybody who's complaining about the hypothetical badness which might come about, I can tell you that my very real-world experience from the tenant from hell surpasses any of your worries. Now, that was that. Now, that was that. Clarification between landlords, tenants, guests, hosts, and all of the like. Affordable housing. The reason we don't have affordable housing is location, 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 and Asheville is the hottest location that there is, and we collect money from the hotels to pay the tourism board to go out there and advertise that this is the best place to retire, it's the best place to get healthy, it's the best place to kayak, to drink beer, to make beer, and to drink beer again. You can't do anything with the ring tax? Sure you can. You know what you should do if you're concerned about affordable housing is cut it to zero because all we're doing is creating more hype for Asheville and paying for it. Tell the hoteliers, "Keep the room rate at the same rate and take that 6% and put it all into your labor costs at the lowest tier first, and then you'd get some real wages in here." The Tourism Authority is doing nothing but creating unaffordable housing. And the people who are trying to get by on Airbnb, if you think that you're going to take Airbnb from them and they're going to make it an affordable place to rent for people, that isn't going to happen. I bought my house in 1999 in a neighborhood that I expected to see change. Changed quite a lot. Lots of homes, lots of infill, less parking, more traffic, and now there is a 100,000-person-a-year tourist attraction that I can hit with a nine iron from my backyard. So the disruptions of neighborhoods and the expectation that you're going to buy a house and it's never going to change isn't something that anybody has a right to. Neighborhoods change, sometimes by way of having a beer factory put right in it. So I don't think that I'm going to be told that I'm supposed to put up with the construction noise of New Belgium, have all of this money and incentives thrown into it, collect money from the hoteliers, have every, every public official in town put their foot on the gas pedal of the tourism bandwagon totally to the floor. And the reason that we're told this is going to be great is because it's going to give prosperity to the citizenry. And now here is some ability for the citizenry to participate in that prosperity, and we can't do it? The young man over here who is destined to be a renter his whole life, you know what he could do perhaps if Airbnb were legal instead of illegal, is that he could put on his financial form and he goes to buy a house that he's got Airbnb income, thereby offsetting his debt-to-income ratio. And your starter home may not be a two-bedroom, one-bathroom home because, of course, nobody's building those because the land value in Asheville is so high. I have a two-bedroom, one-bedroom, one-bathroom house. It was built in 1925. Nobody's building two-bedroom, one-house, two-bedroom, one-bathroom houses when a lot is $75,000. So maybe the way to get into the market is to buy more house than you traditionally would have had in the first place, Airbnb it until your family grows or something else happens. This allows flexibility in a place where we have, we struggle for people to make any kind of wages. For you to be taking wages out of the hands of homeowners is incredulous to me. It's not a micro hotel. The difference between a home stay and a micro hotel is the micro hotel is owned by a corporation. The home part is homeowner, homeownership. And telling people, the homeowners, what they can and can't do is getting to be a little absurd. We don't need, we don't need an enforcement policy. We don't need people to go and run around town on complaints that come from the other side of town because they're on the internet finding out that you're doing this illegally. If there's noise at your house, talk to the homeowner. If the homeowner is not amenable, call the police. If this is a nuisance problem, we have a nuisance abatement program when it comes to renters. If the, if the landlord is slapped as a nuisance problem, they will get rid of the, the county will get rid of the tenants. We have everything that we need. If there's a loud party, call the police. We don't need more staff. We don't need to allocate more funds to, you know, police people in their house. If the flotsam peppers from Duluth are visiting my house for the weekend, it's none of your business if they're here for a funeral because they're my family members, or if they're here to enjoy all of the beer that you've paid to convince them to come enjoy. Thank you very much.
I'm Anne Doherty. I wasn't going to talk hence the t-shirt, but maybe my daughter will see it on TV. She bought it for me for Mother's Day. So anyway, you all know my story, my background. I bought a house in a fancy neighborhood as well. I am a teacher, mother twice, a single mom with no support from dads, and it was a fixer-upper. Bought it at the height of the bubble, December '07, and then a little thing called the recession hit. And I have put years of sweat equity into this home and, you know, more money than at this point, even with the market hot, I could get out. And it had an existing ADU that I never dreamed I would ever rent. It was going to be where my guests would stay because it's the only guest room in the house. So, and I got energy star on it, which I think Julie would appreciate. So, you know, I entered into this, I had some really hard neighbors, and that's another whole story, but I entered into this a couple of years ago, and it has been going on, for whoever said it hasn't been going, it's been going on for almost three years. I remember the first PED meeting when we started talking about it. And I encouraged people, I wouldn't do it today, but I encouraged people to come out of the closet, so to speak. I, a few of us started meetings, we started Google group. My thought was, you know, this isn't going away. The minute I saw Airbnb, you know, I'm from Silicon Valley, I'm like, "Oh, my God, it's going to be the next, you know, eBay or whatever and Facebook," and it is. And I'm not a huge fan of Airbnb the way it is now either, by the way. And it's not synonymous with what we're talking about. So anyway, I, I have all these notes and it is hard to... So here's my concern right now after two years of watching this process. Everybody's situation is different. This is a really, really challenging thing for all of us to figure out. I have a long history of caring about Asheville's neighborhoods. I've owned two houses in Asheville. I've worked hard in volunteer organizations and stuff here. The arbitrariness of the enforcement is, I think, a serious issue. And now the way the home stay is, it's skewing away from owners, legitimate owners, because legitimate owners tend to have separate spaces, ADUs. And now we've, now, you know, and we're skewing towards people that can say they have onsite residence and all that kind of stuff. Plus, the way the home stay permits are being issued, I've been trying to get one for two years and have been hitting a wall for whatever reason, and now I find out that other people have been getting them. And so my fear is, it's going to, you're going to, it's going to get lost in court, and these developers, who I have met a lot of them, they don't care who comes to their place. They don't want to meet their guests, and they scare me frankly. They're in the wings poised to buy up the properties, you know, especially when, and they bought a lot of it when it was at the bottom of the market. And, and so we might lose if we don't find a way to really make this process legal and include everybody, so.
Thank you. That wasn't 10 yet. We can do this. We are, we're conditioned to do this for a long time. No one else? Yes. All right, Jane.
It's only, it's only after eight. Could be after the best. Good evening. I'm Jane Matthews. Housing of all Asheville citizens is a basic need that we, our elected representatives should protect. Tourists taking over our neighborhoods reduces our incredibly limited housing stock, creates communities of transients, not neighbors, and impacts housing affordability at all levels. We are a city limited by the state to grow our boundaries. A good deal of our existing housing is located in older neighborhoods along major transit routes, close to schools, jobs, institutions, and shopping. This housing is valuable to our city and to many residents who have invested their resources into maintaining their homes and apartments. We know from the various reports and assessments made by the city and others that the market within Asheville cannot fulfill the housing demand at the current pace of need. Therefore, a loss of any amount of housing for local use hurts us all, but most deeply the less fortunate and those looking for affordable housing. The scarcity of housing rates raises rates on those left to rent and buy and forces folks to look for housing outside of Asheville, paying for commuting. Less than one year ago, the city blanketed its website, touting adoption of an expanded ADU ordinance as a tool to help provide another affordable housing option. The change to allow ADUs as housing for Asheville citizens was a good idea that needs time and support to fully develop. It has the potential to allow homeowners to use or invest in space for long-term rentals while still gaining individual economic benefit. Cowtown to tourists only provides quick gain for a few who already have the resources to own property, for speculative investors, and for the large out-of-town corporations they use to guard their guests. We also kind of not, kind of not ignore the Compton Plan and the council's vision goals for well-planned, livable communities, for quality affordable housing, for smart growth land policies that strengthen traditional neighborhoods, for the preservation of historic areas and their wealth of existing housing stock. I don't know anyone who would define a quality vibrant neighborhood where they live and raise families as a place they want as a tourist destination. While I live in a neighborhood and have personal concerns, I have been an affordable housing advocate for much longer than I've been a homeowner. I hope I can be a voice for those who have no voice in this debate. Those who go to Co-Ashville Home have shaped this town, have made it interesting, unique, preserved its past, and are looking to secure a bright future for our children and our children's children. That must be rooted in meeting the needs of all Asheville citizens. Tourism plays a role, but it's not everything, and if we put tourists in every corner, every home, every bed, there will soon be no more of the Asheville we know. It will be a mythic place, a stage set, a shell of what it once was, as fewer and fewer people can actually live here. So I implore you to reject expansion of ADUs. However, maybe the only person to speak on this, I am actually asking to adopt the P&amp;Z's recommendation for revisions to the existing home stay ordinance, bringing better clarity to the requirements for the full-time resident management. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for that, on the technical amendment. All right, anyone else?
Yes. Oh, my gosh. Hi, my name is Wendy Dean, and you've all gotten my emails, but you see who's speaking on behalf of accessory dwelling units being home stays, and it's struggling families. The average person, I have a friend who ran one for six months who didn't really need the money, and she stopped doing it because she got tired of telling her children to be quiet, you know? It's, it's not convenient. Obviously, they make more money than a long-term rental, or they wouldn't be doing it. And there's others struggling and waiting for you to pass this, too. And I asked a respected short-term rental advocate recently, and what I had suspected, I said, "It looks like this is mostly women we're talking about that are, that are struggling in these situations," and she said she felt that was true. She said she thinks it's about 75% women that are running these, and these are struggling, you know, single moms and struggling families and people trying to take in their elderly parents. I would ask that you please put the enforcement money toward incentives for long-term rentals. I really feel like that might be the answer. Can't we incentivize, if people are struggling, let's incentivize them to keep long-term renters instead of penalizing it, and maybe everybody can win? That's what I'm hoping. So I would just encourage you to consider affordable housing for families as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I feel like there's somebody who hasn't spoken.
It's here.
Maybe not, actually. I might revise that. Well, the press never talks, but one day. Okay, so this is the part where we're going to have a discussion. So I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this. As a first order of business, do you think we could do the one that's more technical in nature?
I move to approve the wording amendment and modifying the standards in Section 716-1C9C and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following way: by clarifying zoning standards that regulate activity in order to promote harmony and compatibility with the surrounding neighborhoods. This is the amendment changing the definition of full-time resident and kind of how that's defined under the home stay ordinance.
Clarify, clarify.
Second.
Yeah, second. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
I know. Got that one out of the way.
Okay. And now, this one will be a little bit longer. We have heard a lot of comments, a lot of discussions tonight, and we have, you know, I mentioned several ideas at the beginning of this process, and I would just note one thing I meant to add is that if we decide that we want something a little different than what's before us, it will, because it is an ordinance amendment, we'll have to go back through the P&amp;Z process like any ordinance change would, when there's, when council significantly, or not even that significantly alters it at this stage. Take it away.
May I have the floor? So I really, really appreciate all of the dialogue that's gone on through what has been a really long, drawn-out process. This is the most complicated issue I've faced as a member of council, and I feel like all the council members have really wrestled with this and taken time and done a lot of research. I know about cities that I didn't know existed before this process began, as I sought out examples of public policy that was working. I know that reasonable people can disagree on this issue, and so I really respect everyone who's taken the time to advocate for their position. And this is something that's emerging and evolving, and we're going to be doing policy around this for decades to come. So this is one chapter in what's going to happen. I've, as a student at Wharton Wilson College, I lived in an ADU in Montford. It was an upstairs apartment. Family lived downstairs. I lived upstairs with a roommate. It allowed me to get work while I was a student and have an affordable place to live, and stood out to me as a really important Asheville experience. About 10 years later, I was in an ADU which was a separate unit in a backyard. And interestingly enough, it was, I actually couldn't even get a CO initially. Didn't even have a bathroom or a kitchen. It was a couple of empty rooms. No bueno. But what happened is, as a result of my being there, the homeowner upgraded both floors and made it a livable unit that I then moved into with my fiance, and we were able to save enough money to then buy our first home in West Asheville. I've been an ADU resident. I've seen what it does. I see what it's done in my life. And I want, there's a lot of opinions and a lot of feelings around all this stuff. I just showed you some of my feelings around it, but I want to talk about what we know. And here are some of the things that we know, and forgive my lack of brevity. We know that 50% of Asheville's residents are renters, that Asheville is in a severe multi-year housing crisis with a less than 1% vacancy rate at all price points. We have a housing shortage at all price points, not just in the affordable range, but all the way up until you get to the very highest, a shortage in all of those ranges. We know that we have skyrocketing housing prices due to a lack of supply. We know that Asheville has the highest rents in the state of North Carolina, bar none. We know that Asheville was named the sixth most unsustainable housing market in the nation just a week or two ago. We know that short-term rentals reduce housing supply. We know that people are already being pushed out of their long-term rentals to make room for short-term rentals. They've contacted me. I've talked to them. It's already happening. Don't tell me it's not. The expansion of home stays has been opposed by our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, the Housing and Community Development Committee, Planning and Zoning Commission, the Coalition of Asheville Neighborhoods, Children's First Communities and Schools, Hall Creek Neighborhood Association, Grove Park Sunset Neighborhood Association, and the Albemarle Park Residence. We know that out-of-state people are buying homes to illegally short-term rent in our town right now. We know this is happening. We know the use has exploded since council has taken up, taken it up, since it's become more clear that it's illegal, that the use has skyrocketed since then. We know that last year, the rationale for expanding the ability to build an accessory dwelling unit on your property was to address the housing crisis. It was for rental, long-term housing. That's why we did it, and it's a bait and We know that last year, the rationale for expanding the ability to build an accessory dwelling unit on your property was to address the housing crisis. It was for rental, long-term housing. That's why we did it, and it's a bait and switch to change it now. Cities all over the world are trying different ways of approaching this, okay? So there's nobody who's got it nailed down, and lord knows we have looked. We looked at cities all over the world, and some people are like, "Just let it happen. Miami's going to be all right." And other places are saying, "Absolutely not." Berlin just banned it in all their apartments. And then everything in between. All kinds of people are taking all kinds of approaches all over the world. San Francisco, Berlin, and others have taken strong measures to limit ADUs. We know that when housing developers come before us, we ask them to mind our housing crisis and to mind the concerns of the neighbors. And when those housing developers are individual units, it seems the same value system ought to apply. The same value system that we apply to the 200-unit developer. When there's 200 units being independently developed, this ought to be a common value set. Again, that's more opinion than fact. Sorry for mixing it in. Our current enforcement is inadequate and must be improved. Cohesive neighborhoods are safer neighborhoods. Residential zoning has meaning and value. The multitude of strategies that this council is taking to approach the affordable housing crisis and the housing shortage in general is this multitude of tactics, because we know that there's no one thing that's going to solve this problem. We know it's going to be a lot of things. This is, this item before us is one of those. Just last year, city council made it easier for people to have home stays so they could tap into this local tourist market without jeopardizing affordable housing stock. We wanted to open it up, but we didn't want the camel's nose so far under the tent that the next thing you know, you get the camel in your tent. That's, didn't reserve it. It's similar, you know? It's, I'm sure I'm angled it. The number of long-term rentals in accessory dwelling units in the city of Asheville is not known. The number of existing accessory dwelling units is not known. We don't have a count on this stuff. Facts. Some STR operators operate more than one property. Some short-term rental operators report that the short-term rental is crucial to them being able to stay in their homes. This is true. There's a deep division in Asheville over how to proceed, as evidenced by, and this council unanimously in January voiced its displeasure and its unwillingness to support the displacement of residents in reference to Lee Walker Heights. One council member going so far as to saying he wanted guarantees that anyone displaced would not be permanently displaced, that they would be able to have a place and then to return. That value of not wanting to displace our residents is one that I believe we ought to carry forward. So two issues lead me tonight to oppose this expansion of home stays. One is we are in a historically severe housing crisis, and that anything that could reduce our housing stock is reckless, irresponsible, and in my view unconscionable. And there are serious, reasonable, and historical concerns about commercializing our neighborhoods to open houses to tourists all over town. One issue gives me pause, and that is that some people report that they need to use this to get their mortgage. I don't want anybody getting kicked out of their house. I don't want anybody. So what I'd like to do is counsel that we take a patient and prudent approach, that we not worsen our housing crisis, and that we not radically alter the meaning of residential zoning and the neighborhoods that that zoning creates. Given a few years to observe other cities and attack our own housing crisis, I'm confident we're going to understand these public policy options a lot better and be able to get to a better place. Having said all that, I'll make a motion to deny the wording amendment modifying the standards in Section 7, 14, 3B, 3A, 3, and find that the request is not reasonable, is not in the public interest, and is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, in that it introduces a potentially disruptive use and activity in single-family neighborhoods and will likely result in the reduction of housing in a market where housing is in scarce supply.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask that we suspend the motion and continue conversation?
Motion on the floor.
Sure.
I'll second the motion, and we can continue discussion.
So let me understand the motion. You're making the motion to deny the proposal that's before us tonight, but what I heard you saying is you, while you have concerns, there is one area that gives you pause.
Yeah, I've got another motion I'd like to make in the creation of a task force that would examine policy and processes regarding the use of ADUs by people in dire straits who can't long-term rent, who may lose their homes, and to refer the duration makeup and purview of this task force to the government's committee, with final approval to be made by this council. That's a different motion.
That's a forecast of the future motion.
Can I make a comment?
This is the time.
Yeah.
Thanks for letting me have all that time. I appreciate it.
First, to respond to that, because you just mentioned, I don't think the city's in the business of means-testing things, but we can, we can talk about that later. Since we're using anecdotes to start out with, in 1981, I spent a couple of months in Britain and mostly camped, but every so often, to get a shower and a bed, I stayed in what they called B&amp;Bs, which were home stays. That was way before the internet, so you bought a little pamphlet that had listings, and when you got to a town, you could phone up. Usually, they were empty nesters for the most part. They were wonderful experiences. I really got to know people in the country. I really got to have experiences that they recommended that I never would have seen as a hotel tourist. So I have a real warm spot in my heart for the whole idea of a home stay. My bottom line on this issue has been from the beginning that black markets are impossible to regulate. The reason we don't know how many short-term rentals there are in the city is because outside of the ones that are legal in the urban center or the commercial areas, they're not legal. So of course, we don't know how many there are. When I think about legality, and we're trying to crack down now using the internet to track down people and so forth, look at Silk Road. You might remember that. Silk Road was an international money exchange that was funding a lot of drug deals. Interpol and the FBI busted it. They busted it wide open, and within three days, it was operating again. We're not going to get control of an international internet operation at the local level. It's just not going to happen. If we, if we check the Airbnb listings and the VRBO listings and the Home Share listings and the Craigslist listings, there are going to be 18 more internet options for people doing things. Until we make them legal and licensed and regulated and inspected, we're not going to get a handle on this. Now, there's complete agreement, I think, on this, on this council. We don't want to legalize whole-home, short-term rentals. If we legalize, versus right now with the home stays that are legal right now, if, in the regular, the old-fashioned home stays, if they had to put their license on the ad, then our enforcement people could look at the ad and tell if it was a legal rental or not immediately. As it is, you can say anything you want to on an ad because it's free speech. So if we extend this to ADUs in some fashion, whether it's grandfathering or a numerical limit by census tract or a lottery, however we decide to regulate that, we will immediately be able to say, "You must show your license number in your ad," and then our enforcement people will know that this is legal and that is not. They'll be able to tell that a whole house is not legal because right now, you can't even really tell that. The ads can be pretty subtle about that. But we have a handle on it. We begin to get a notion. I remember when we first discussed this, I went on Airbnb and entered Asheville, and it said 1,000-plus rentals. And I went to Weaverville, and it said 1,000-plus rentals. And I went to Swanonoa, and I went to Montry, and they had 1,000-plus rentals. And Biltmore Forest, obviously, those numbers mean nothing. And today, or the last day or two, today, I think, Rich Lee, I believe, posted on the Asheville Facebook page, Asheville Politics, there was a study supposedly that analyzed by zip code to show us how many rentals there were. Well, 28804, where I live, it said there were 125, but it included things in Weaverville. I mean, it's completely unreliable data, and we're not going to get reliable data unless we legalize. When we talk about 200-unit projects where we try to get people to put some affordability into those 200-unit projects, we incentivize it with cash. We give them tax breaks to get that stuff done. We're not offering tax breaks to homeowners to incentivize them to keep things affordable. We're leaving them to the open market. And going back to my experience in Britain, the reason why so many people were doing that is because their economy sucked. It's exactly the situation we're in here. The recovery has happened for the top 1%. It has not happened for everybody on the ground here. It has certainly not happened for wage earners in Asheville. Of course, the hoteliers, as one commenter said, should be in cahoots with the low-income renters because the hoteliers are not paying decent incomes. I mean, the problem has to do with income and with the TDA. I'm advertising this place like mad, bringing in people who, I meet a lot of people who retire here from California, selling their house here, buying a $300,000 or $400,000 house here and having lots of money left over to retire on. I mean, our high prices are other places' low prices, and we're selling this place over and over and over again. I really believe that the best way forward is to find a way to legalize ADUs as short-term, find a way to grandfather the old ones, find a way to limit. I've been talking with our legal department that there might be some way to restrict new construction so that they can't come in and buy and build a new ADU and immediately short-term it, whether it's a five-year. I proposed a five-year limit to really kind of de-incentivize that. There has to be some way that we can let residents here who've, in good faith, as one commenter said, she didn't know that it was illegal when she was doing it. I had no idea it was illegal. I mean, maybe I should have as a city council member, but I think that a lot of people got into this business completely innocently. They thought, "Yeah, I got a rental. Yeah, I've been renting it long-term. I hear about this thing called Airbnb. Maybe I'll try it short-term." Had no idea that they were breaking the law. And I know of several people who've talked to me who've invested substantial money. One couple put $60,000 into a cottage behind their house because they could price it out with doing the short-term over several years. They were shut down, and now they own three other houses. They were doing pretty well. They've raised the rents of the other three rentals to help cover their costs. So it eliminated three much more affordable units by shutting down the one that was their cash cow. I know there's no perfect answer, and as one person commented, everybody's story is different. But I think we need to move ahead with this. I think we need to find, whether it's that chilling period on new ones or a lottery or a limit on the number per census tract, however we do it, I believe we need to move forward. It has been years talking about this. I think it's been very unfair to the people who were caught short, who didn't know it was illegal. And I would like to take it back to staff and see if we can find some answers, and in a shorter term. I don't like the idea of appointing a new board. We're talking about another six months, eight months, 10 months? I just, that seemed, it's been talked about, as Randy Boggs pointed out. We've had these reports, and the reports have indicated that short-term rentals are not a big factor in affordability. They're not a big factor in losing. Of course, we're going to lose some units, but we're also going to gain affordability for some people. And we certainly have employment for a lot of people who are doing the house cleaning and the yard mowing, and it is true, in my visual experience, that short-term rental people keep up their properties better than a whole lot of our long-term landlords. So I will be voting against the current motion because I am in favor of a path to legalization. Thank you. I'm sorry, I've been lengthy, too.
Yes, yes, I'll say something. I guess I owe it to folks to say something. Wow, I think this is the most notes I've probably taken since I've been here. And it's a very complex and extremely delicate issue. My comments may or may not step on some people's toes unintentionally, so I'll just ask that you ball your feet up for the next two minutes or so. I guess affordable housing and preserving the fabric of our neighborhoods has been, I guess, two of the most common themes that I've been hearing through emails, through conversations, telephone calls, people getting up. And I'll just try to provide a different perspective from all the other folks up here. Still trying to be objective as I can. There's a lot of assumptions that are going on with this issue, assumptions being made that, you know, from both sides. One is to assume that if we pass this, we're going to erode affordable housing. So with that assumption is, you make another assumption, that assumption being that the actual homeowners that are doing this will make a conscious and concerted effort to rent long-term. And then you make another assumption that if they decide to rent long-term, they're going to be affordable with it. If our focus is going to be affordable housing, I think our focus needs, if our focus is going to be affordable housing, then you have to shift that to, it's a major argument, a major argument of, you know, better-paying jobs, affordability, homeownership, major, a major governmental push to provide affordable housing through possibly like bond referendums or whatever those massive efforts may be. You know, it's very hard for me, in good faith, to limit the rights and enjoyment and use of one group of homeowners for the use and enjoyment of another group of homeowners. I'm just, I just want to be clear that I have no sympathy at all for folks who have purchased or built homes above their means with the anticipation of utilizing a service that is illegal as of right now. Folks have a personal responsibility to govern themselves accordingly and minimize their own risk. But I will respect folks' rights to utilize their property in the way that they see fit, understanding that they also understand that this body here reserves the right to regulate that process and minimize the scope of intrusion on neighborhoods or neighbors. You know, lastly, I don't see anyone, now, just looking out and people that I've talked to, I don't see anyone from my neighborhoods that are here. You know, that, for or against the issue, folks, you want to know why? Those folks are struggling on a whole different level. And I know folks who wish they could be approved for a home loan, let alone be allowed to rent that home or a second home or a portion of their home for extra income or rent. Now, there's folks that are throwing out words like "low income" and "struggling," and, you know, I've seen struggle. I've lived struggle, and I know folks who are struggling. So those arguments on both sides, you know, there's arguments on both sides that don't meet the smell test for me. You know, they don't meet my personal bar, including the one of disrupting the fabric of the neighborhoods, especially when we've come from times of redlining and gentrification in this city as of right now. That still exists. And possibly in some of these neighborhoods where we're talking about short-term rentals. You know, I'll conclude with this. I will, I will continue to remain objective, but I will also see this argument from my point of view as what it is. It's a battle of wills between middle and upper-middle-class neighbors. And if you own a home in Asheville, you are de facto middle-class. You know, my fight is in the trenches, but I'm going to, I'm going to remain pragmatic. I will continue to lend my voice to solving this issue. We deserve to solve this issue in a timely manner, also be prudent. But it's a complex situation. I don't think it's going to end here tonight. I know a lot of folks want it to end here tonight, but I don't think it will. I'm going to vote against the motion with the hopes that we can come up with something different.
I'll just try to be...
I just want to warn you all, everybody's got notes up here.
So I'll try to be maybe briefer than I would have otherwise because I think I maybe see where this is going. But I agree with Gordon, this is a, this is a complex issue. It's well-intentioned, thoughtful people on both sides who I like and respect, and I appreciate the respectful way in which we've been able to have these conversations. That's been really helpful. But I do also think that though this is, even though we've been talking about STRs for years, this particular nut, this ADU nut, is relatively new, at least to me. And I think it is the hardest nut to crack, and I think we had to figure out where we were on the easier stuff, on the whole houses and on the home stays, and this is the thing in the middle because it's kind of a little bit of both of that. So it's... So it's... I know, again, Cecil, you've been having this conversation for a long time. I haven't been having this conversation for a long time, and I feel like I've come in at the hardest piece of it, so... Thank you. Appreciate that. So I do think we need to take time and get it right. And, you know, and my thinking over this has changed over the last few days, really. I was prepared to come in and just say, "No, you know, support the motion that Gordon has made and sort of be done with it," but I've shifted a little bit. But let me just explain why I am going to support this motion, and then I'll get to the shift. So I've said this before many times in this room, and those of you who know me know that this is... that process is extremely important to me. And we take issues like this through the process that the city has. And for us, that is vetting it through all the citizen boards and commissions we have. And I don't need to repeat the number of boards and commissions that have considered this and voted not to change the rules. Those recommendations carry a lot of weight with me. It doesn't mean I will always agree with them, but I feel like I need to have a pretty good reason to disagree with them, even when I may personally disagree with the outcome of a good process. If it's a good process, it deserves some respect. So, and I think this has been a good process. The second reason that I don't support changing the rules right now is a policy reason. And Gordon also mentioned this. It's the changes that we made, that the previous council made to the ADU rules last year in order to expand the availability of housing in our community. Not affordable housing necessarily, but housing generally. And I agree with that policy objective. I have heard no indication among my colleagues here that we want to revisit that policy objective. It is incredibly important, and it's only really the first step in a whole series of policy changes that staff is working on that will get to the same goal, that will get to the goal of increasing the availability of housing stock, making it easier to build smaller homes, making it easier to build multi-unit structures on existing parcels of land. And we have to be cognizant of that policy objective behind each one of those and make sure that we're not frustrating it by allowing all of that new expansion, theoretically for long-term housing, to go into the short-term rental market. That would completely frustrate everything that we're trying to do. So that's where I stand generally. I do think there are some lines potentially to be drawn on some of the things that people have mentioned tonight. So for instance, this grandfathering idea. Because I do... I am sensitive to the pleas that we have heard from people about the fact that their ADU is the reason they can stay in their house. I'm not interested in displacing anyone, want people to be able to stay in their homes, want people to be able to stay in this community. So I think we need to wrestle with that, and I don't think we're done wrestling with that. And so that's sort of where I am, so I will...
Where are you on the task force?
I think the task force is a great idea, but as one of our speakers said, I do think it needs to be time-limited. The level of knowledge about STRs in this community is extraordinarily high. So like, we don't need a startup here. We just need to get the right group of people, set them to work, and say, "Come back with recommendations in like three months, three to four months." And I know for some people, that's a really long time, but in the scheme of things, it's not a really long time. So I would... If Gordon's second motion were a motion, I would second it and support it, but that's not where we are yet, so I will support the motion as it is currently stated.
Okay. Which one of you would like to go?
Monica?
Well, I'll just be short and sweet. I support allowing ADUs to become part of the homestay rules. I think they should be highly regulated. I agree that with all the things we've talked about trying to prevent, as far as looking at caps and other things, I believe we should do all these things. I think we should send it back to staff and look at this again. I could possibly support a task force if it had a short timeline. But my main concern is here, I definitely know that there are people that need these rentals in order to survive in this town, and those are the people that I'm concerned with here tonight and going forward.
I... The issue, I think, for me with ADUs is it is a little different, and I do think that it's going to require regulations and limitations that by just taking the lid off and saying, "Okay, ADUs can be home stays," doesn't address some of the uniquenesses of ADUs. So because of that, I guess I can't... I would agree with Gordon's motion, but I do think that there are some... I think there's a lot of room for some compromises. There's some opportunities to maybe allow some ADUs to be home stays, that kind of thing. But I am convinced that there needs to be some limitations, and I don't think that we currently have the right solution. So I don't think we're ready yet to just, as someone said, take the lid off of ADUs without some other regulations around it.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is the current proposal before us is not satisfactory in that it doesn't include some of the elements we're concerned about, namely, talking about some kind of grandfathering so that new ADUs couldn't be turned into home stays, exploring the idea of a cap, and looking at some other issues that aren't really... they're frankly not before us right now. This is simply just a proposal to take the cap, to open it up. And I continue to have concerns about the integrity of the neighborhood. This, you know, Asheville is a wonderful place, and my family lived in Norwood Park when I was younger, and that's the kind of place where your neighbor is very close to you, and it's a close-knit community, but also a great place for a possible home stay or something like that. So, but I continue to have that concern. And, but I do worry about folks who are essentially being priced out of the home that they may have purchased 10 years ago or 15 years ago, and they're struggling to be able to stay in our community. I'm a little more comfortable with the ADU concept because there is someone, a long-term tenant or owner there to address issues that might come up with visitors. But I do like the idea of exploring a cap. I mean, as Cecil pointed out, we really don't know the numbers. We don't know the data, and we don't know if there's 1,000 people ready to do this or if there's 10 people ready to do this. We have... We don't have any idea. So I think that a go-slow approach is a lot easier to manage than trying to open it up and then rein it back in. So I would be very interested in that, in looking at a cap, and also maybe exploring the idea of a conditional use permit, which would allow council to vet every single application for one of these. And it would give the neighbors an opportunity to show up and say, "I live next door to this potential short-term rental, and I..." or "home stay, and I'm not comfortable with that," or, you know, whatever the case may be. I don't know. I think a task force would probably need to think about that because that's an involved process. So, you know, our affordable housing crisis in Asheville is extreme, and it is something that's happening in other communities that are also coincidentally struggling with this issue. And that's actually not a coincidence. I mean, that's happening because they're popular communities, but they have a finite amount of housing. And I was just reading an article today about some expert who was explaining how the affordable housing crisis in San Francisco could be relieved, and the answer was simple. It was 200,000 housing units. They have an entire department that regulates short-term rentals, and that's because they are having... When we think we're having an affordable housing crisis, they're having it times 100. And so there, every single illegal home stay or short-term rental in San Francisco is probably a housing unit that's not on the market for a long-term rental. So I do think that there is reason to be cautious and to go slow and try to find a balance that addresses the needs for those that are living in our community that are struggling to make sure they can continue to pay their mortgage with those residents that are here and are enjoying living here and their neighbors and those who are renting and trying to find housing to live in. And, you know, one last thing I will add about this. You know, it's sort of interesting to me that zoning... When you think about zoning in neighborhoods, it's very clear to people. They understand that one of the purposes of zoning, for example, is so your neighbor can't run a business out of their home. You know, they can't decide to open a grocery store in their house and have people come in and buy groceries all day. That's pretty clear, right? You can do that. Where, you know, you'd have people coming and going. It's very disruptive. Yet, running a home stay out of your home is, in a sense, operating a business out of your home. It's just a home-type business, so folks don't think about it the same way. But the reason that we have those regulations in place is to try to preserve the integrity of our neighborhoods and to be able to give people some stability in their investment and that, you know, because their home may be their only significant investment. And so they need to make sure there's not going to be an asphalt plant next door next week. So I'm not saying this is an asphalt plant, but it's sort of a slippery slope to me in terms of what it is that we can allow to take place in neighborhoods before we're eroding what it is, and that is a neighborhood. I do appreciate the process, and I appreciate how educated all of you have gotten on this issue. All of the emails, all of the 200 or so emails I have received this time around are very thoughtful and on point. When we first started this discussion three years ago, we would get emails where people were clearly not understanding what we were able to do in terms of how to think about the issue, and that's all done. Everybody is incredibly informed and could probably write their own pamphlet on what the issues are before us. So I appreciate that. I appreciate your willingness to stay up till nine and listen to us. So we have a motion and a second, and if anybody else... Yeah?
Well, yeah, I was going to just ask a question. I was finished though.
No, I'm done. I was going to get into the motion part.
So with that, I wanted to respectfully ask, since it seems that this may be turning in a different direction, I'd like to ask two things, either or. One, if the council member would respectfully table, remove the motion, let the motion die, or let this body table the motion and have the mayor direct this body as to other means.
Well, so we have a motion to deny what's being presented to us, but then we could have a motion to create a task force with some direction, or we could have another motion that gets this continuing on its way.
We ought to deal with the motion as it is in front of us right now, the right?
Yes.
So what I'm asking is that council member withdraw the motion or let this body table the motion to move in a different direction, respectfully.
I appreciate the respect and with due respect. I feel like being able to have as much clarity as possible right now is really helpful. And since we won't be moving forward with changing it tonight, I'd like to be very clear that we're not doing so with the knowledge that we are going to be creating a task force around some of the concerns that were raised tonight.
And as the person who seconded the motion, I agree with you. The need for clarity is important, and I think the message that might get sent with this vote is for everybody to, you know, again, we're making the edges clear. So we're drawing a very clear line to say we're not lifting the lid, and we're also saying we're going to find someplace in the middle and asking everybody to be in that place with us and help us get there, even if that necessarily means negotiating a little bit against your interest.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Mayor, can I have a second?
Okay, ready? All those in favor, raise your hand. And all those opposed, raise your hand. Okay, now, next motion time.
So if, as we're looking at this, if we can find a way to allow those in dire straits who, for whom a long-term rental is impossible for some reason, in order to stay in their house, I can be persuaded to support it. If we can't find it, I probably won't be. But in the pursuit of making sure that we're displacing as few people as possible, I'd like to make this motion, if I can find it.
It's like a preamble to the motion.
That's my preamble. I move to create a task force to examine policy and processes regarding the use of accessory dwelling units by people in dire straits who may lose their homes. And two, to refer the duration, makeup, and purview of this task force to the governance committee with final approval to be made by the full council.
I would point out that we have experience here with every developer that comes in here tells us that without, you know, but for a tax break, the deal wouldn't go. Every business that comes into town, but for a tax break, it wouldn't go. You're asking for people to line up in front of this podium and say, "Oh, I can't make it." And how are you going to prove it? I mean, that's, to me, that's an impossible thing. I mean, we don't do means-tested stuff at the city level that I'm aware of, except, I mean, we do in the sense of using federal funds and so forth to fund affordable housing, but how are we going to...
This is why we ask a task force, because it may be that we need more than two brains on this.
Okay.
Well, do you want to... I mean, I hear the motion that you made includes some...
Direction.
Direction from where... And I share the same concern, but I would like the task force to be able to explore the issue and maybe be given a copy of the minutes from tonight to hear where... Each of us have spoken on it, and they can get some sense of where we are on the issue, that what we're talking about, what I hear a lot of people saying, is concern about making sure that people are able to stay in their homes if it's an affordability issue for them. I'm a little bit concerned about the dire straits test. I don't want the task force to think that they have... I want them to understand where we're coming from, but I don't know if they need to...
Someone else probably better make a motion.
Okay, I'll take a crack at it.
Oh, okay.
Not prepared. Okay.
I withdraw the motion.
So I make a motion to create a task force to look at policies and procedures around the issue of ADUs as home stays, taking into consideration specifically the concerns that have been expressed tonight around not wanting to... Or, well, I'll just say, specifically including concerns around new ADUs and being used as short-term rentals and therefore frustrating the policy objective of the rules that council adopted last year. And then number two, a concern about people needing the income from ADU, STRs to remain in their home and in the city.
And the numbers.
And the what?
The numbers, the total.
Ah, well, and exploring other strategies like a cap or a cooling-off period. I don't want to list an exhaustive list, but just say, including those things and other strategies that will, again, sort of achieve the policy objectives that you've heard people express up here tonight, or the policy concerns.
Wouldn't it make rather more sense to just create a task force to look at ADUs used as home stays? And then let the task force decide what the issues... I mean, if we don't, if we make a list, you're already directing the answer.
Right, so I think, but we just got an answer. We got a very clear answer that we're not lifting the lid on all ADUs existing today and in the future to be used as STRs. That's done. We just did that. So this is what we're doing now, which is the next step, to try to address the concerns that have been expressed up here around people needing to stay in their homes and not wanting to frustrate the policy objective of the rules that we passed last year. Not we, but you.
Poor Maggie. She is coming to...
Poor Maggie.
She's coming to type out all these motions. All right, we have another version of this motion.
I move that we form a task force to examine the question of ADUs used as home stays and suspend enforcement until that report comes back and Asheville takes action.
Point of order. Is there a motion already almost?
I didn't hear a second. Was there?
Yeah, well, so Julie's...
There was no second, so I thought we had three.
All right, Julie's made a motion, and we...
All right.
We could do your suspended part as a separate motion.
Yeah.
I'm also happy to...
There's a motion. Do you want to mangle it up some?
Would you be open to a friendly amendment to suspend enforcement efforts until... Would you be open to a friendly amendment to suspend enforcement efforts until we, until the task force reports and we act on this?
Suspend enforcement efforts of existing ADUs?
Right.
As STRs?
Yes.
I would be open to that with my second term.
I, I think we're going to have a legal issue, let's try to...
Yeah. I'm not sure what you're... I mean, we've got, and, I mean, there are things...
Let's just do that separately.
Yeah, let's do that. Sorry, hold on, be clear, what you're, what you're doing.
All right.
The suggestion is that minutes after making, drawing a very clear line, that we say that that very clear line is not to be enforced. Is that my understanding?
No, so we're taking, I...
So, we're not going to consider, that's not part of her motion?
Not part of my motion.
I'll withdraw my friendly amendment.
Okay.
We just have the long motion to create a task force with all the complicated suggestions.
It's been seconded.
And it's been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Did your motion include telling some, some group who's going to make up the task force?
Did it goes to Governance Committee?
Oh, I didn't say that, but it goes to Governance. There we go.
And I seconded the Governance.
To add the part about the, that the issue goes to Governance to, to come up with that. And if we need to have a Governance Committee meeting sooner to get it going, that's fine. Okay, so you, you amended it, I mean, you edited it, and you seconded the edit. All right, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I had Keith, Julie...
Do a raise of hands.
Yeah, all those in favor, raise your hand.
This is to create the task force.
Yeah, okay, so we're, the, done, the task force is created.
Unanimity.
Now, you, do you want to make a motion about this?
Yeah, I would move, and I'll have to get council from our council, but that we suspend enforcement against ADUs being used as short-term rentals until the task force reports and council takes action. I think we're leaving things hanging. It's, I don't think we're making it less clear. It is, you know, that, that's the position of council, that we're, of the majority of council, that we're, we're not going to relax the rules at this time, but neither can we, I don't believe we can continue to enforce the way we have if it's possible that we're going to legalize it. I mean, I, I think we've left people hanging already for six months.
I second.
It's my sense.
Okay, we have a motion, a second.
Wait, may, may I just ask for clarification? Does, are you saying that we don't enforce any of our short-term rental regulations, or can you be more specific about which rules you suggest ought to be allowed to be broken?
I meant the short-term rental rules around ADUs. I think we should continue to enforce against whole homes.
And homestay?
Okay, so, do you want to say anything about, about, I mean, I, what I hear you saying is this is a motion to suspend enforcement as to all accessory dwelling units being used as a homestay.
So, everyone can...
And this body just deliberated that, it sounds to me that in the very least, it would contemplate something less than that ultimately anyway, so I have a little bit of concern about that, but do you have a legal concern?
I do, I, I do, and I, I want to, I want you to do whatever you, everybody wants to do. First of all, there are a couple of issues. First of all, we have enforcement that's already underway, some fines that have accrued and gotten to the point where I don't think at this point that you can take a blanket sort of forgiveness across the board. They would have to be negotiated. Now, the second thing is, is that I think the courts have been pretty clear that you have an obligation to, if you can, enforce your ordinances, and there are cases where if you do not do that, you can actually, a citizen can bring an action and, and force you to enforce your ordinances. So, that's a risk. The third thing is, is, is that you have just passed, right now, that is, that is not a legal use to rent an ADU as a homestay. So, basically, what you're going to say is, we're going to let people violate the ordinance and still we, until we decide to change it, and I think that that can be problematic as well because it's not a legal use. It's almost like you're saying, it's against the law, but we're, we're not going to enforce it if you're in an ADU, but if you're in a whole home, we're going to enforce it against you, so it's a little, you have to have some reason why you would let some people violate that. Well, first of all, you shouldn't let anybody violate the law, but if, if you're going to let one group and not the other, there has to be some reason, so...
I understand that now, thank you. It still seems amazingly unfair. See, what we're now doing is we're, we're talking about six more months, and people are maybe losing their homes, and people maybe, you know, move out of town because they can't afford their house anymore, and they may have made financial plans around something they didn't even know was illegal some months ago. I, I mean, it seems to me we're leaving people hanging, and I'm not comfortable with that at all. That's, that's what I was trying to get to.
I understand.
Yeah, but I, I see, we can't, I got that. We can't, we can't not enforce.
Can we put some sort of timeline on this task force?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have a special governance meeting, and this council meets again, when's our next meeting, Maggie?
June 14, and the governance meeting on June 14.
Well, we can move that up and meet earlier, and then bring something to council on June 14th to create the task force, advertise it, and appoint at the second June meeting?
Sweet chicken.
Super fast, yeah. Is that too fast? Maggie's giving the frantic face.
I'm not sure about the advertising period, we'll, we'll do what we can.
Try to do it, okay. Okay.
I'll also say that in the past, we haven't necessarily done that type of appointment process. When we did the Blue Ribbon Panel on the health care for the city, that was selected by council.
That's right. Same thing with the Energy Innovation Task Force.
The Mayor's Development Task Force.
I, I would be perfectly happy to defer to Governance to make these appointments. I mean, I think the leaders in the community on this issue were clear.
Just to get, just to get going.
Exactly.
Can we do that? I couldn't follow.
They, they, they were talking about not requiring council to, to appoint, go ahead and let Governance just design the task force and appoint members. Yeah, you could do, call it what, green ribbon.
It's green ribbon.
And we'll, the trusting Governance will, will get all angles on this, right?
And well, I mean, we could bring it back to this body for a vote on whatever Governance does, it depends on how fast you want it to go.
And, and yeah, and one thing we have to remember is we don't have a meet, that we don't have the first meeting in July, so if, you know, you get me on June, then you're...
If we had, if we had a quick Governance meeting and Governance designed the task force and made some recommendations for appointments and brought that to council at the next council meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
That would be pretty quick.
Sure.
And then, anyone on the task force better not be going on vacation this summer.
And just so people know, who's on, who's on the Governance Committee?
Me.
The mayor?
And Keith.
Okay, so maybe if you're interested in serving on the Governance Committee, you can email one of those people and say, "I'm willing to serve."
Unless they want to be on the Governance Committee.
No, I'm, sorry, I meant on the homestay, I meant on the committee, the task force, the blue ribbon thing, the green ribbon thing.
Yeah, it'll be, those meetings are advertised and they're open to the public. They take place on the first floor of this building, that's, this is the Governance Committee.
But we'll do one quicker than the next.
Yeah, and we'll put a notice out about it.
So, let us know if you want to serve, is the main...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're done with this item, right?
We did it.
We did it, we're done.
We're allowed to cut.
Yeah, I know, it's sort of unsatisfactory.
It is unsatisfactory.
We kicked the can.
We do, we do have one, one item left, and I'm going to hand it over to the vice mayor to handle.
Okay, so, if you're going to leave, can you just keep it down so we can...
Do, do your chatting in the hall, ladies and gentlemen.
Chatting in the hall, please.
So, what, what's in front of council is the makeup of the three at-large members of the Haywood Street Advisory Team. We had re-advertised for that, so we got another, you know, great set of people. This afternoon, council interviewed four people and two, and then there are two additional applicants. So, we interviewed David Nutter, Gary Anderson, Susan Andrew, Geronimo Owen, and we were unable to interview, but they are, they still want to participate, Leslie LeBlanc and Richard Ford. So, what we'll do is just have people, so each, each one of the council people needs to vote for three members of that committee, I'm sorry, of the task, of the advisory team. Blue ribbon, green ribbon, purple, I don't know. Brian, you want to start, please?
Give you my three choices?
Yes, please.
David Nutter, Susan Andrew, and Geronimo Owen.
And who?
Geronimo Owen.
Owen, okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so Nutter, Andrew, Owen.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I didn't get yours, Gordon.
Here they come, Fort Nutter, LeBlanc.
Okay.
I am Anderson, Andrew, and Owen.
And I am Anderson, Owen, and LeBlanc.
Andrews, Nutter, Owen.
I am Nutter, Anderson, and Andrew.
I am Owen, Andrew, and Nutter.
Anderson and Nutter.
No, Owen, Andrew, and Nutter.
I have that, Nutter, Andrew, Owen.
I have Nutter, Andrew, and Owen.
There is a tie between Gary Anderson and Susan Andrew.
There's not, there's not.
Oh.
It's Nutter, Andrew, Owen.
Yeah, I've got five for Nutter, five for Andrew, and five for Owen.
Oh, I, I, you're right, I apologize.
The Anderson and Andrew is confusing.
Yeah, I got it.
So, we really appreciate all the applicants, and, and this is going to be really hard work on the Haywood Street Advisory Team, so everybody just needs to stay really plugged in, but it's going to be great work, so thank you for participating.
And I believe their first meeting is Thursday morning, and isn't there a public meeting Thursday later in the day?
5:30.
5:30?
Civic song.
So, if you're interested in, in tuning in at the beginning of this, look for the details on the city website, I would guess.
And the other thing is, is July 31, I'm sorry, June 30, we have a lot of people who are rolling off of, of committees and commissions, so to the public, please, please apply. We have vacancies listed on the agenda, and there's a lot, so please show your interest and get involved.
So, this is the public comment period, is there? We have one member of the public here.
You sure you don't want to say anything?
You were very good earlier, you could speak on anything.
Come on, just...
You've got a gig to get to.
Oh, okay.
So, you're part of the gig economy?
Well, you look good, of course. Okay, wow, let's do that.